Welcome, everybody, to our April 18th City Commission Work Session. We'll call the meeting to order. If you will all join me as Jennifer leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of 40,000 citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, we'll turn to our presentations. We have our Earth Day proclamation. I'll turn that over to Commissioner Gow.
Well, thank you, Mayor, very much. I would love to invite Natalie, our Sustainability Coordinator, to come up and hear the proclamation, receive the proclamation, and then say some wonderful words about the planet we live on. Earth Day 2023, whereas April 22 marks 53 years of worldwide Earth Day celebrations, which began in 1970 when 20 million Americans rallied for a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas all life forms on Earth have the right to a healthy, sustainable environment and is caretakers of our planet, we all have an obligation to change human behaviors that contribute to environmental degradation to preserve the Earth's beauty and resources. And whereas Dunedin is fortunate to have over 1,600 acres of parks, open space, preserves, and trails, which enrich the lives of residents, visitors, and wildlife. And whereas the city of Dunedin is the home city for the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot, which supports critical marine species and promotes ocean conservation and water quality. And whereas Dunedin has ready-for-100% clean energy goals for municipal and community-wide operations. And whereas the city adopted Dunedin's Resilient Environmental Action Master Plan, Dream, in March of 2022, which is a 10-year plan with 150 action items. And whereas the city of Dunedin will continue to support and educate about environmental awareness, natural resource, and wildlife conservation, clean energy, sustainable practices, and so much more related to the well-being of our planet. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gow, by Commissioner of the City of Dunedin, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2023, as Earth Day in the City of Dunedin, and call upon all residents of this great city to be engaged in local and global efforts to protect our environment and join me in supporting the goals of this worthwhile effort.
Yay. Hi, Natalie.
Hi. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager Natalie Gass, Sustainability Program Coordinator for the city. And I'm excited to be here to celebrate Earth Day, Earth Week, Earth Month, all with you. April is Earth Month, and there's lots of really great activities. So I just wanted to share, the city started Earth Month with Plant Day at the library, a plant swap, different activities. We participated in the Florida Food Waste Prevention Week with some different videos. We had a compost community event, and recently the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. This week, at the Downtown Market, Michelle Monteclaro, the Stormwater Coordinator, and I will be at the market, we'll have a booth talking about sustainability, stormwater, how people can get engaged in our programs. We also have the Wila National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation happening all month. And we have the Dunedin Environmental Hero Awards happening all month, so you can nominate community members. We have been promoting events all around Pinellas County. We've created and have been sharing an educational series on our social media platforms and have blog posts about sustainability, Arbor Day, stormwater, and the Hope Spot. I also wanted to share a few great accomplishments that have taken place here in Dunedin since the beginning of 2023. So the city received the 2022 Outstanding City Partner Award through Key Pinellas Beautiful. And this partnership has saved tax dollars over $139,000 in cleanups in Dunedin. With the partnership of Blue Green Connections, we hosted the first-ever zero-waste festival in Dunedin, 97% diversion rate with only about 1.34 pounds of garbage actually going to the landfill. And we also recycled 2,000 oysters at that event as well from restaurants in the county, and those are being turned into vertical oyster gardens and putting back out into our Hope Spot waters. We opened the Gladys E. Douglas Preserve, 44 acres of environmentally sensitive land and the 80-acre adjoining lake and wetlands, recycled over 43,000 pounds of paper at Shred Fest, and moved into the New City Hall, which is five buildings in one, much more efficient, energy-efficient. We have four EV charging stations, solar on the roof. And I am right after this meeting with the assessor for Green Globes to review all of our points and receive that certification. So with that, I hope you all have a great Earth Day, Earth Month, and that you learn something new about the planet, participate in our Dunedin activities, and take action within our community. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Busy little beaver. Okay, now it's time for citizen input. Anyone wishing to speak on a topic that is not already on the agenda, please step forward, give us your name and address for the record, and the clock is above my head.
Good morning. My name is Sally Stanfield, St. Andrews Links, 2185 Gulfview Boulevard. Pleasure to be back. And this morning, there's two perceptions that I would like to bring to your attention. Number one, St. Andrews. We might be thought about as a community of old folks up near the golf course, Dunedin Golf Course. Actually, we're not. Our age spans several decades. We boat, we swim, we fish, we fly. We enjoy swimming, tennis, pickleball. A lot of us own dogs. We're college professors, public and private school educators. We are attorneys, pastors, engineers, business owners. You get the idea. So we care, which is why we keep showing up. And we want to do it the right way and work with you. Second perception, misperception. Perhaps we sound like NIMBY. Okay, I mentioned that to Commissioner Gow a couple months ago. We get that. Again, it's where we're located. We have this beautiful green space known as Sterling Park. But in actuality, we're looking at good thoughtful use, preservation of green space that once it's gone, it's gone. And it seems, yet again, as I show up this morning, we're now looking at the east coast of Florida with the massive amount of rainfall, flooding events. We know about saltwater encroachment. We know about the impact of non-permeable surface. So in collaboration with our community, with St. Andrews Links, I may have done the typing, but I've emailed this to you, and I will send it around again. But this is a proposal, a working starting point. We're in conversation with the VFW 2550 post. We're connecting with the American Legion. We want this right, ADA accessible. We want to find good locations that are available within existing infrastructure so that we meet that demand, but provide something that's really special, that can utilize semi-permeable and permeable surface. We know we have to pay attention to water. We know we want to educate. We have a special five acres, five and a half acres, to really provide a serene space, whether it's active or passive recreation, it doesn't matter. When I talk to veterans, I have been out to the post, and I have talked to several people. I've been over to the Legion. They're interested. I think you're hearing it. But we're inviting them and will want them involved with our meetings, with our St. Andrews Links and surrounding communities. That's why we want to partner with you. And I thank you for your time, and of course, there must be parting gills.
You can just hand those to the clerk, and she'll make sure we get them.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gow, because I did not have your email hand-delivered to you of the letter. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to any item that's not already on the agenda?
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Denise Minch. I live at 2202 Gulfview Boulevard in Dunedin. I am also here to speak about Sterling Park. Just a few minutes ago, you made an Earth Day proclamation. Even as you pledged to support and educate about environmental awareness, natural resources, and wildlife conservation, I encourage you to lead by example with your Sterling Park decision. This winter, members of the Sterling Park Neighborhood Group have been pretty busy. We've come before you to show that the city's plan for a dog park and pickleball courts at Sterling violates the comprehensive plan. We've made presentations, sent emails and written letters about our concerns while suggesting alternative uses for the park. These uses are more respectful of the park's natural features and more beneficial to the entire community than a dog park and pickleball courts. We have studied each of the proposed uses for the park to see how it complies with Dunedin's epic goals, epic goals which I know you take very seriously. We have conducted an informal survey of current usage of the outdoor tennis and pickleball courts in the city. Our observations over 17 days in May indicate that outdoor demand is being met by the currently available courts. We have met with Parks Director Gizzy and presented what we believe are valid locations for new pickleball courts, all within active recreational areas. All of these studies, proposals, and findings are included in the packet that we are presenting to you today. We have also requested a meeting with City Manager Bramley, and we look forward to presenting her our findings in further detail. As your constituents, we are advocating for a thoroughly considered decision. To quote one of the statements in this Earth Day proclamation, Madam Mayor, "We are caretakers of the planet, and we have an obligation to change human behavior that contributes to environmental degradation in order to preserve Earth's beauty and resources." We ask you, the City Commission, to preserve Sterling Park's beauty and resources, both now and for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can just give those to the clerk. Okay. Who's next? Anyone else? Thank you all for coming again. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. That is the approval of the minutes for March 21st and March 23rd. Board and Committee Appointments, Architectural Review, and Social Services Committee. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing or hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved, taken.
Okay, Vice Mayor Torga and Commissioner Gow. Is there anybody from the public that wished to speak to these items? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. First item on our action items is the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee Continuance So I know Frances is here and Sharice is here, the Chair of the committee. And we have our biggest community advocate joining us today, and that is former Vice Mayor Deborah Kynes. So welcome, everybody. And I see some committee members here as well. So please, I don't know who's starting, but go right ahead.
I'll start. So, good morning, everyone.
Sharice, if you want, you can sit at the other staff table.
Good morning, everyone. Frances Leong Sharp, Planner 2 for the City of Dunedin here. This morning, we will be speaking about the Historic Preservation Advisor Committee Continuance. And here we have here today, this morning, alongside at the staff table, we have George Kenny, our Director. And then we have Sharice Ponraj. She is the Chair of the committee. And I'll let Sharice present an overview of what the committee has done over the past few years or as of recent, and she will provide you the summary right now.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager. So I have been the Chair for about six months and have kind of written up the yearly review to go ahead and go through with you guys and to request the continuance of the committee. The program was enacted in 2018, and at this point, we have safeguarded our history and heritage for 20 designated homes. Four nationally designated homes are sites, which were done prior to the creation of our Historic Preservation Code. Last year, we processed our first Certificate of Appropriateness. So the Certificate of Appropriateness is the document that governs changes to homes that have been designated. It was the first one that was processed, and I think that that was a good use case for us to go ahead and examine that process, look and see how that worked, and make some improvements. So this year, one of the things that we're focused on is, we have a bit of a laundry list of things. The number of homes that were designated last year was only four homes. So actually, in '22, the program slowed down a little bit. We have 20 total homes and only four last year. And what we'd want to see is an increase in the number of homes that are protected and designated over time. But what we did last year was a lot of hard look at the homeowners, what they thought of the program, what they get out of the program, what are the motivations and thoughts behind it. And so this year, what we'd like to do is make some adjustments to our city code, and I'd like to just kind of walk through what those look like in total, so you can appreciate what we're going to work on this year. As you know, we've been lucky enough to be given grants by the state to go ahead and do survey work in the city, which is absolutely wonderful. We've done one survey so far, and we've been funded for the second one, which will take place this year. And we will, we're going for a third one as well. And your support, everybody's support to continue doing those surveys is going to be very important in terms of being able to move forward with historic districts, which is also one of our goals. So through the grants that we get and the funding that you guys also support in the budget, we're able to work with a contract company named Kimley Horn. And Kimley Horn has been absolutely critical in helping us navigate, like, changes to the Certificate of Appropriateness. They have a lot of education and experience with all the other towns that they've worked with in terms of setting up these types of chapters in their code and understand how it works and a lot of history. So we are consulting with them. Actually, we just had our first meeting with her this year, last week, extremely informative and helpful for the committee to hear from Blair Nighting, who is our consultant. And these are the things that she's going to help us with this year, and that will eventually be coming across all of your desks as well, as we present them to you later in the year. So one is, for homeowners, the FEMA 50/50 rule right now is set to a five-year, is set to five years, and we'd like to see, hopefully, an exception made for designated homes to reduce that. We're working on what that would look like in the proposal, but a reduction of that is item number one. We definitely would like to have an option. Right now, we can only designate a historic home for the entire parcel. And it would be nice to have the option to designate just a structure by itself or the entire parcel. There's pros and cons, and I think it's very situational, depending on how and when you would want to apply that option. So we're working through that with Blair as well. And then we are going to overhaul the COA, the Certificate of Appropriateness, what we learned last year when we really got our thoughts into it and the detailed review of, hey, you want to change your front door, you want to add a pool in the back, you know, how much oversight and governance should there be in specific situations for our designated homeowners to go through? Taking into account the cycle time that it takes for them to get it through and those factors. So we want to pull back that oversight and governance significantly so that we can absolutely put forth any types of demos or major modifications to the front of the home through the H-PAC Committee, as well as the ones that are appropriate to come before you. Whereas right now, there's a lot of that, and I think that what we want to do is really shift that governance and control more so to city staff and just make the whole concept of designation a bit more palatable by doing that. And the other thing that we don't have yet, which is also really exciting, is Blair's going to help us establish our first historic district code. So putting the code in there, you know, putting it through this year, and really have our eyes set on our first historic district, no matter how big or how small or where it is, just getting it going. I think that we're all really excited to see that happen. I want to also highlight, in October, the City of Dunedin Library held a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Kellogg Mansion Historic Preservation Exhibit housed in the glass reading room of the library. They did, the library did an exemplary job of running this project. We did receive a grant to go ahead and put the exhibit together. And, you know, with that, with the home being demolished early last year, it's a great thing for the community to have. I know that the library is booked regularly, like, they're booked two weeks in advance to look at the exhibit, so there's been a lot of interest. And at this point, that exhibit is going to be packaged up and moved in the middle of the summer over to the USF Library, who is also a partner on the project. So the committee, you know, heavily supported the project, and it was a success. And I want to thank Phyllis Gorshee and Anne Marie Neumberger for being absolutely critical, as well as the entire library staff, but they really just put a lot of heart and passion into the project and did a great job with it. All right. As a matter of fact, I have a few little stats here. The library has had over 200 visitors, three scheduled programs, and it's consistently scheduled. All right. I don't know, are we able to show the survey by any chance? Is it too difficult? No? Okay. All right. Well, there is a real...
Is that this that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, we have it. We just don't have it for the TV.
Sure. Okay. So those are the three different surveys. The red one is Phase 1, the blue is Phase 2, so you can see we're kind of focused along Edgewater Drive for what we're going to do this year. And then we kind of back in into the south side a little bit for the third one. That's the one that we're going to ask for the grant for this year, and everyone, fingers crossed. We'd also love to see, oh, sorry. So the city has recognized as certified local government. I think some of you were probably here when that happened and some not, which allows us to do these matching grants. And, you know, I think it's really important that we continue to do that. Only places where surveys are done, I think, are really eligible for historic districting because you need to have all that underlying data and the support of that process to be able to do that. So I think the more expansion we get in terms of surveying, the better it's going to be for the program. We'd love to see our first business set up as a historic parcel at the moment, so we're working on that as well. And I'd just like to kind of close up by saying, May is Historic Preservation Month. I know that Anne Bachneberg, who is very active in historic Dunedin and all the things we do with preservation, has written a proclamation. I'm not sure if we have enough time to work through that, but at least, you know, some type of promotion around Historic Preservation Month. We have a really wonderful map, which is where that image came from that I pasted in there. That's from our own city map, the Historic Preservation Map, promoting that, promoting our citizens to understand the program a little bit more. I know we did some education last year that we can build on and encourage people to go look at the homes, go see the plaques, talk to the homeowners if they're friends with them or what have you, because I think we really want the program to grow and have home designation be palatable, be something that people perceive as something very positive. So that's what we're working towards. And I think that's it for my comments. Does anyone have any questions?
Hang on, I'm just checking our...
Oh, there is one thing I forgot.
Go ahead.
In addition to the list, my apologies, I actually have it here. I just jumped right over it. One of the last things after I talked about the historic code, we have reviewed the Enabling Resolution for the committee, and there is a requirement for the Senior Director of the History Museum to be included on the committee, which we have had a vote, unanimous vote, to remove that requirement. And I'll just give you a comment as to why. There's really two reasons, one of which is it is very difficult to do historical research and to collaborate with the library, given Sunshine Laws with a requirement on the committee. And second, just, you know, pay for a non-city employee to be required on the committee to serve in that capacity without pay. So that was the last item. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we all agreed to that. We did that when Deborah was here, so I don't know why we didn't change the resolution, but we can. Somebody bring it forward. And, I mean, we can fit the history...
Just to clarify, to eliminate that position as a member of the committee?
Well, a voting...
Bring a resolution forward?
Voting member.
As a voting member, okay.
Required member.
Okay.
As a required voting member. They can be, if they're an ad hoc, then I don't think there's Sunshine Law issues. I don't know. Y'all work through that. We don't have to debate it here, but there was something...
You're saying there'd be a member of the committee where they'd speak and consult, but they just wouldn't vote on it?
Yeah. I mean, we have a lot of people that...
Ex officio.
I mean, he is our city historian, so, and we do give the History Museum money. So being there as a service to the city is not unreasonable, is what I'm saying. So however, that has to be configured to make it legal in the resolution, I think is fine. And I'm looking at the agendas for May, and it looks like we could fit them in.
Can I just get one clarification, just so that as we move forward to bring this back before you? You still want seven members on that committee, correct? We're just removing the requirement for the Director. I just want to make sure everybody...
Well, I think you all need to talk about it, because I still think that person, whoever it is, needs to be there.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that...
I'm just, however that needs to be done, where it's not conflicting with Sunshine Law and those kinds of things. There must be a connection between the Historic Preservation Committee and the Historic Museum.
Absolutely. I think that one of the reasons I personally was comfortable with that outcome was because I think that there should be such an obvious strong connection between the two, that their presence should always be with us.
And we're going to work on that.
Yeah.
As you know.
Yeah.
And there are doors open to that now. So maybe you work with Jennifer, and Jennifer?
I think, just one comment, if I may, Mayor. And I think that the rationale...
behind eliminating that position as a member of the committee is because of the Sunshine Laws, because of, you know, moving your agenda forward. But I just want to be very clear that, that we can do that and we'll bring you a resolution, but that person cannot be a go-between, between members of the committee. They can talk, you know, if they're not on the committee, they can talk directly to members.
And they'll have to be, I guess, educated, just like George's and Francis are well-versed in what's allowable and Sunshine Law matters and public record matters. And so, again, to me, he or she, whoever that person is, you know, going to be in the future, provides the city services in many different forms. This is one of them and it should be one of them. So, however we make that happen, if that means they have to take training-
Okay.
That it's not approached lightly. Does that make sense?
Yes. We'll bring you something back.
And it looks like there are early May meetings, but if it needs to be mid-May?
Yeah.
I mean, it looks like there's room. So, wherever you feel like you can fit it, I'll look at the two of you. I'm looking at it and I'm, I don't see a problem, but you all might know things that I don't, so.
Yeah, we have two presentations on the second and two on the fourth.
Yeah, you have two, well, the one on the fourth is pretty lengthy because it's all the top apple and all that stuff.
I would think it would be the second, just to take advantage of the whole month.
Yeah. So, the second might be better, but that's during the day. Are you okay with that?
Sure. Yeah, I think we've done a lot of work also on the preservation map and it's also ready to really, you know, put out there and have people look at and, yeah, and to encourage citizens, citizens with certain hashtags and such as in, you know, we'll present that at that meeting.
And I would think you could, you and Sue, or Sue could work with her on promoting that.
Sure.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay, so, questions or feedback or comments or anything, looking at you all?
I had, I had a great opportunity to review everything that was presented, so it looks like you're moving in the right direction and sounded good to me.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No, I mean, doing a great job. That was a very thorough update. You guys are hard at work.
They're rocking it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good way to put it.
So, I just want to personally thank you guys for all that you do with so many historic preservation issues and a lot of different communities going by the wayside. I think what you guys are doing is, is exactly to the heart of this community and so I just want to say personally, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, you know how I feel. And I know it's been a slow road for the last year and a half, but I had a nice long conversation with George yesterday. He assures me that you all are meeting, that things are moving along, that the consultant is now on site, so to speak, working with you. And we went over the whole list and I got all my questions answered. So, I, I felt pretty comfortable.
Yeah, I feel like we have a lot of support and between Francis and George, I feel like we're really going to make some progress this year, so very excited.
Very good. Okay, anything from you, Rebecca, as our liaison to our committees?
We should say that, you know, Rob actually does have one of the historic calls.
Yes, he does.
I mean, we should make that-
Yes, he does.
And we are very proud of that.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Walker.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to come forward and speak to this? I'm looking over at you.
Me?
Yeah.
I forget I'm public, you know, I don't know, I saw-
I forget I'm public.
If you have to speak, you know, you got to come to the microphone.
And you only have three minutes.
No, Deborah's an exception.
This is very important. They've worked so hard and they have so much energy and real excitement and passion about this subject. So, you all have a great H-PAC. We thank our staff, they're fabulous. And just thank you. Thank you all. That's under three minutes.
Thank you for all your hard work towards this subject. We appreciate it.
But she didn't give her name or address.
Rebecca, do you remember?
Yeah, I think we can find it.
Anybody else want to come forward and speak? Okay, so what I need is a motion for the continuance of the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Rob Walker and Commissioner Mo Franny, thank you. Anything final from anybody? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So, now we have the award of the bid for the pram shed replacement in the amount of $502,000 and change. I will turn this over to Bruce and Vince. Welcome.
I'll start off. Good morning, Bruce Worth, Section Engineer, Engineering Division. Again, as you indicated, we're here today to ask you to award bid number 231226, the pram shed replacement in the amount of $502,256.75 to Qualus General Contractors LLC of Tampa. The project involves, as you may know, the demolition of the existing pram shed and then the construction of a new pram shed. Project, once awarded and noticed to proceed, will take 90 days for substantial completion with another 30 days for final completion, if necessary. So, are there any questions?
I am so sure there are. Did you have anything you wanted on Vince?
The, the one, one part of the, the construction is after the pram shed is completed, the furnishings and the, the, the storage racks and the shelves, that's going to be-
I'm sorry, what? I'm just listening for noise. Okay, I think they went outside. Go ahead, sorry.
So, what's not included in the contract is the furnishings and the storage racks and that'll be a separate contract after the building is-
So, that's something we're doing as well?
Yes, but it's not part of this contract.
Do you know how much that's going to be?
No, but we do have another $100,000 left in the budget to spend. I don't think it's going to be that much.
Okay. So-
And we want to be able to have the club see the building, see the interior. They already have plans that have been drawn up, so we want to make sure that, that all gets put in after the building is complete.
Gotcha. And that fits within the revised budget that has already been approved?
Yes.
Okay.
This budget was 502,000, or the budget was 600,000. Project was 502,000.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
I, I do.
Vice Mayor?
I do, thank you. Bruce, maybe you can help me with this. So, we, we started off with knowing that we needed to have a new facility out there and somehow we ended up, I, I perhaps with an architectural firm, that perhaps maybe over, was overstimulated or, or we ended up with a, a, a bid that came back at $800,000 for, for that facility. And then, we went, I think we went back to that same architectural firm and they, did they downsize it to, to get it down to the 500? Or not, not to get it to 500, but to get it to another requirement and then the bid came in as low as the 502,000, the winning bid. Is that, is that pretty much correct?
Yes, and, and I went back and looked at, you know, what, what caused that and, and just a couple of-
Thank you.
-points. They went, part of the redesign, if you will, bid was they went from cast-in-place concrete beams to prefabricated beams and that was a savings in, in terms of the, the materials and, and the cost for that, that building. They also went from a framed exterior walls to breakaway prefabricated walls. The roof system was changed. They, they went from a, a, a constructed truss to a, again, a, a, as they put it, a, again, they, they changed the truss, roof truss system to, to, again, utilize prefabricated truss. So, the combination of, of, you know, the, these changes to the materials and the structure was, was the result of that, that coming in, you know, 300,000 less.
So, that's, was that pretty easy to do with, with the firm that we, we use? I'm very familiar with the firm. I'm very supportive of, of, of this entire thing. I just want to get a couple of questions.
Yes, they, you know, so, so the size of it didn't change. It was really, you think about it, the structure, the foundation didn't change. They, they did change that, the way they were doing the piling. So, a combination of all those things, you still wind up with the same footprint. Again, it's a little, you know, again, value on, on, on the constructability and the materials. And so, that, that's how, you know, we brought this in within budget.
Thank you. The other question I have, which is difficult here, but just, is there a possibility? And I don't really want to change it because we need to get this in place because of the condition of the current, of the current place. And again, I'm very supportive of our entire sailing programs that we have there. We at one point in time had talked about a master plan for the marina and we had said, hey, if, if we ever make changes out on, on the peninsula out there, that we might want to move the harbor master or the, or the marina folks out there. By us saying "we," that goes back to when we did the Waterfront Task Force and there were other meetings that had taken place. Is there a possibility to add at some point in time for a spot, for example, for the harbor master? I know there's a, there's some availability in that facility for the, for the marina staff that are, are doing some work there. I don't know if that's been taken into consideration, but just wanted to, just wanted to open that up because I think at some point in time, there's tremendous cost to redo the building where the current harbor master sits. It would relieve, obviously, some parking spots than in that very heavily parked area and some of the activities that we have. It would just eliminate them being in that area. They would be then out in the peninsula. I just bring that up because that was discussed a couple times previously over time period and just wanted to know if there's any flexibility for that.
I'm going to have to have Vince maybe take a shot at that.
Yeah, as far as the master plan goes, we're still in the stages of gathering information and looking to see what all would be included. So, right now, I don't have a real good answer for you on that.
I'm asking about the facility. Is there a flexibility for the facility?
I, I don't know. I, I see the footprint. I'm not 100% sure exactly what goes in all of those areas. You know, there's some storage areas-
I think it's probably too late to try to consider that since the bid has been locked.
Vice Mayor, if I may, within the pram shed itself and the footprint, you have wind lasses and Dunedin used sailing and I would say that there is not room within the facility as, as it's designed right now for the harbor master's office. That's your question, correct?
No. Is there a possi, can that be taken into consideration?
On the peninsula?
Yeah, it's just as a thought. And if it could, then perhaps they save money by-
Right.
-by, by making that, not exception, but just the opportunity for that. So, I just wanted to bring that out.
Right, there is room on the peninsula and we'll, we'll have to have a look at that when we, when we do the, the master plan and consider that and all those questions to that end.
Well, certainly you would do that, but I'm, I'm asking, I'm just asking if, just, I'm just alerting you from the construction standpoint that should that occur, you know, maybe it's beneficial to take that into consideration at this point in time. I don't know. So, I thought that was my question.
Yeah.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Actually, along the same lines is, is the Vice Mayor. There's no doubt that we need the new pram shed for all the activity that's there, but in light that we're about to do a master plan, that at least today, we don't know what that plan looks like, for the amount of money that we're spending, is there any value in putting a Band-Aid on the pram shed today for the condition it's in? And I get that. Just so at least we're, we're the footprint, we know what we're dealing with, with a master plan. And I don't want to put in 500,000 and then when we do the master plan, say, well, we have to do the plan this way because this is where we put the pram shed a year ago or two years ago. And since we're so close to the master plan, is there any value in that?
Well, the building's 75 years old plus-
I get that.
And it's been Band-Aided more than one time. It's been, you know, Band-Aided quite a bit. But I understand your, your question about the master plan and I'm not sure, I know we have the money to actually do a master plan, but right now, I don't, unless, you know, I'm, I'm mistaken and I could defer to Jennifer, as far as money for the actual construction of a master plan or placing the elements of a master plan, I, I don't know when that money would be, become available.
It would be over a long period of time. I mean, a master plan for the marina might take as much as 20 years to complete, depending on what we're doing.
That's a terrible master plan. If it takes 20 years to, by the time you do that, then you need another master plan.
I mean, all the capital as well.
Except, except it's very expensive capital, that's why. I mean, if it, if it wasn't, that would be different. But I mean, you know, 2 million here, a million there, 500,000, you know, if it's calling, if it's calling for a jetty, you know, that, that could be $4 million in, in itself.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm not talking about the implementation of the master plan, but at least if we have a footprint and have an idea where things are going, then we're not lacking ourselves in today for something that we might regret two or three years from now.
If I could, if I could just, good morning, Jorge, he's Deputy City Manager. If I could just elaborate on Vince's comments. Understand, you know, the inquiry, but to kind of put it in perspective, as you know, we, we bid this previously, came in at almost 900,000. We value engineered it. Actually, to clarify, the original architect was the Lunds Group and we went back to SDG Architecture to do a value engineering redesign, which is resulting in the recommendation for the award of construction of just over 500,000 now. The timing of this project always has to do with the sailing season, so if we don't award today, then we're going to have to defer this and, and rebid it in the future so that it coincides with the sailing season going forward. So, with respect to the master plan, I believe what Vince was trying to allude to is although there's funds budgeted to do the master plan itself, out of any master plan comes the capital projects that need to be implemented, which I believe is what the mayor was speaking to, is those are currently unfunded and depending on the scope of those recommendations, there could be substantial permitting that could delay the implementation of that, aside from getting the funding available. If you're doing jetties and things like that that need to get permitted through the Army Corps of Engineers, that is not something that happens quickly. So, with respect to this particular structure, I know Nicole frequents that, that facility quite often. It is in somewhat disrepair. So, given the real estate that we have out at the marina footprint itself right now, unless we actually expand the marina further, there really is limited locations where this facility could be constructed. So, hence the recommendation to move forward at this time, but that's certainly the commission's prerogative.
When is the master plan scheduled?
It's budgeted in this year, so the, the commitment that had been-
Went out for RFP, right? Isn't that what our business plan just said?
Yeah, the, the plan is to bring the scope for the master plan before the Marine Advisory Committee and review it, much like we did a couple months ago when we amended the, the rules and regulations. We wanted to go over that since there's been new members on the MAC and go over it in detail and make sure we incorporate their input and then advertise it. You know, given staffing levels currently, most likely it'll, the recommendation for award will be late this fiscal year, but that's the plan.
I, would you repeat that? You're going to go to the, you're going to go to the MAC and then you're going to go out to, to bid, you said?
Advertise the RFP for the, the marina, for the master plan.
We're going to go to the MAC with a scope for, for the RFP.
Review it with them.
Request a proposal, right.
With scope?
Yes.
To solicit their input. This is the, the scope that we've developed.
And we, we're certainly going to hear about that as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Obviously, we'd have to come to you to award the master plan regardless. These are all the steps before we bring it back to the commission.
I'm just jumping in on his time.
No, no, no.
We're just have, we both have the same concern.
Those are valid questions, I just-
Yeah, and I'd say the idea that we're potentially lacking ourselves in to something that we don't necessarily need to, but, okay, sounds like we're locked in. I don't get it, but we're locked in. it, but we're locked in. So as far as this being.
You might want to stay.
As far as this is now the front facing to and it is today, but this new building, does it have a hurricane rating to it? Does it? I saw there's some numbers about wind speeds and things of that nature. Like given where we are with super hurricanes and climate change and sea level rise.
Is that with those breakaway walls?
The breakaway walls are designed, you know, like like anything that's when the within the surge, that it'll we get that surge and it's those walls will break away. So but structurally, it will withstand, I think, a CAT three. The breakaway walls probably won't, but that's that's the that's the design. Yes.
Can I just jump in on that with just really quick? This is ADA and I forgot I didn't remember looking for the heads in in the building.
How many people can fit in?
The restroom. Sorry. I'm so sorry.
I don't think there's.
Somebody's raising a handbag there.
No, there's no restrooms. It has a it has some electric. It's fans and one sink.
Yeah, it's a shed.
Exterior.
We do have a sink in there.
They use the restrooms over at the boat club?
I understand that, but there's also many sheds that have bathrooms in them. I just didn't know if they if it had one. And it is ADA, correct?
Yes.
Yes. I just like the idea that we talked about. It's just a shed, but it's $500,000. And so it's.
It's a waterfront shed. That's why.
Apparently.
Because it's a waterfront shed and you have to build it differently.
Man.
It used to be $100,000.
No further questions.
Mr. Cartburn.
Yeah.
Don't want to go there.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you guys have brought up some interesting conversations, so I'm just going to play off that. What led to us wanting to replace the pram shed?
75 years old. It's falling apart.
Yeah, but you need to go back and tell the whole story. This thing's been going on for years now.
Yeah, I want to understand. I know enough to be dangerous about it.
I mean, there's nothing in our staffing that tells the story. And maybe that was purposeful.
No, no. And I mean, let me just tell you what I'm, you know, this is the prism I'm looking at everything through right now. We need 2.75 million to do all four of our priority projects. Right? So everything's on the table, including $600,000 for a shed. So I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, there's a lot of things we're Band-Aiding until we get to 2028 where potentially we'll have the fourth or fifth penny to work with. So I guess what's driving this one to be that important to be done now versus waiting till the master plan?
Well, I think we need to speak politically. We, the the boat club, the wind lasses, used sailing, all came forward. I mean, this was this was a community effort. It wasn't just something we came up with on our own. And then there were problems with storage and everything. So this has been going on for what, five years?
At least.
It's been a while since they first came forward. And there was reason after reason after reason, COVID being one of them, that it got delayed and delayed and delayed.
And I know it's gotten delayed, but again, I'm I'm.
I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying.
Trying to hone in on the factual, how everybody does their thing there, how how they're being impeded by the condition of an old Band-Aided building versus a new building.
Keith Logan, Division Director, Public Services. Structurally, it's past what FEMA would call or building code would call the 50/50 rule to put the building in the shape
that to meet code. We just can't do it. It's got termite damage to the point that the floor is not safe to walk on. The studs in the wall are rotted to the point that, you know, 50% of the walls are just rotted away. So to to put the building back in shape, it's, you know, past the point of those two building codes. So it just needs replacement.
So Keith, are you saying that, you know, the Band-Aiding isn't allowing for safety at this point?
It's been like that for the past five years.
So you're saying we can't fix it up a little bit?
Yeah, and without violating the 50% rule, which means you have to.
We've been doing that for years, but it's just gotten to the point that we can't, you know, it's becoming a life safety issue.
Yeah. So again, in clarity, if you spend the money that needs to make it safe, you violate the 50%, which means you need to replace it.
Correct.
Okay. No, I mean, and that's that's, I mean, and that's kind of what I inherently, I just didn't remember all the detail about it. Just wanted to, you know, again, I'm looking for, you know, or I think we're all looking for money to be able to make sure we get those four priority things in. So but what you two brought up is a great point, too. You know, why do something till the master plan's done? But but I get it. I get it. And I have no doubt that, you know, I'd be getting calls from the user groups if we didn't do it because they they know, you know, with detail, you know, some of the issues over there. So I guess my other questions would be the size comparative. Is it exactly the same size? The new one's going to be the same size as the old one?
It's bigger, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Isn't it bigger?
No, it's the same size, sitting on the same footprint.
And then as far as the look, I'm assuming that the look has been reviewed by the different committees that ought to look at it, the boat club, and we've thought about it in our own prism of we've got to hit. Yeah, I've seen that. But, you know, that's, you know, that.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, I saw. Yeah, I'm not going to go there. But I saw another facility that looked good on paper, but it didn't look so good when it was built. So, you know, the pen and pencil.
The cardboard.
Yes, the cardboard. So I just, you know, I just want to make sure.
Let's just be honest. We know what you're talking about.
Yeah. I mean, it's next to what was considered a historic structure. I mean, I think we're actually still working towards and we're waiting for the pram shed to be done to kind of formally get the get the boat club historic designation. And so I guess my question is, we've considered all that. This is going to look good and feel good next to the historic boat club.
The goal was to have a very nautical look to it, and I think that's we've accomplished that.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay. And the boat club is all well and versed in what it's going to look like as well, right?
I know all the sailing clubs have have seen it.
But the boat club has seen it. I mean, I mean, I mean, do the members generally know?
The MAC has a boat club representative on it?
Okay.
That can speak for the boat club.
They would do that.
Actually, yeah, he's president. Now he's the chairman of the board, so.
Okay, good. Good. Yeah, I just want to make sure we've covered all those bases. So, you know, it's a very, you know, I mean, when I think about putting the, you know, the ultimately harbor master out there, I can't imagine one more thing out there on the peninsula myself. But it that look is really important. So, yeah, so I just want to make sure we've covered our bases with that. Yeah, I'm done.
Mr. Sheriff?
So just a few things. So the master plan discussion, that's a that's a really good point. And with that said, and tied very much to the cost savings, having walked through both the pram shed and the boat club property many times, I will say that I my unexpert opinion will confirm that the pram shed needs to get replaced. And regarding the historic preservation, I think we're very close to decoupling the prams pram shed from the boat club structure. So I believe that, you know, that should not be an issue aesthetically. And then to answer your question, Mr. Franny, yeah, I think so the chairman of the marine advisory board is a boat club member. And I think, though, it would be beneficial to probably do a presentation for the boat club membership. Again, I think from a boat club perspective, we are probably more concerned with just the the stability of that particular structure. But I do have a couple of questions related to these comments. When when did you say that this was going to commence?
If you award today, what we would do is well, the agreement will be sent out to to be signed by both parties. Typically take anywhere from two to three weeks. During that time, we will contact the contractor, set up a pre-construction, and at that time they'll tell us when they want the notice to proceed to begin. I can't tell you, but it could be. Our hope is that once we get going here, we would have a notice to proceed by mid-May. And then it's 90 days from that notice to proceed to when they need to be substantially complete.
Okay. Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to have a communication point. But the other question I've got is, we've started this process for a business plan initiative specific to the boat club structure. The boat club has been slowly sinking into the peninsula. And the concern that I would have with the pram shed is, has there been any sort of impact assessment to the boat club structure as a result of this demolition and the subsequent construction?
Soil testing and that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Not a bad thought.
I don't think specifically, but we are, we have discussed and looking at how they're going to set the piles. The demolition, I don't think is going to cause any type of, in my opinion, vibration or anything that's going to cause a problem. There's about a 12, 15 foot gap between the buildings, too. So we don't expect, you know, that's going to be a problem of things falling into it. There's have to be careful to bring those walls down. The one thing we were concerned about, not just for the boat club, but also for the seawall, is that when they put the piles in, that they they do so not they they order them in so that we reduce any vibration. The construct, once you get there, the construction itself shouldn't cause any sort of a vibration damage. But we'll, we are aware of that. But we've got the seawall on one side. We got the boat club on the other.
Okay, good. I'm I'm going to use this as kind of an entry point and I'll talk about this during the business plan initiative. But, yeah, the boat club, when we've taken some some pretty, I'd call rudimentary measurements of basically the how the how the boat club is settling. And I will say that one inch over the course of 2022 to present, you know, that's that's pretty significant. So anyway, I that's, you know, that that kind of drives the question with regards to, you know, stability assessment for the for the pram shed, as a result of the pram shed. But I think I think this is a is a probably a follow on discussion for the business process initiative. So I'll I'll get to that when we get to that part of the agenda. So anyway, thank you.
I'm looking at you, Keith. Because it is such an old building and I am the history museum, all things history liaison. I have to ask if that building was moved away from the water, is there any reuse for it as a historic thing? It's a shed. I understand that. But is there another park we could put it in and then label it, you know, where it's not on the water? You could do a little fix up and then we could designate it historic. Don't laugh at me over there. If I don't ask this question, I'm going to get like Shanghai'd. Have to ask.
I'm glad he laughed.
Oh, I knew it was coming.
I mean, honestly, the logistics of trying.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
No, the logistics of trying to move the building. I don't think, you know, would.
You think it might fall apart?
Yeah. We tried to move a building once before with the previous city manager.
See, you're a smart guy today. You didn't say the building wasn't worth it. You said it might fall apart if we try to move it.
Yes.
I remember driving out about.
I know what you're doing.
I remember driving out at about 4:00 AM after Irma had passed with Keith and we were amazed that it was still.
There are three buildings that we always chase right after the winds die down. And that's the first one.
Okay.
What are the other two?
This is the second.
And the boat.
The old municipal building was the third.
Okay, well, that's one of my questions. And I'm assuming that when you do the timing, you are working with the boat club on this because not only do people, it's not just the sailors that you have to worry about because the boat club has, you know, generally one large event every month on a weekend when, you know, and self-construction material or equipment or things are around or accesses, you know, on a particular day, you know, there needs to be, you need to have a contact within the boat club to go over their calendar. You've got that going on? Okay. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to come forward? Come on down and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name and address is Rita Root, 2423 Hill Creek, which is one word, Circle East, and I live in Clearwater. And I'm here because I'm the head of the user group of the wind lasses. And I appreciate everything that we're doing and I love it and I'm excited about it. And I love all the questions. My question is, and I hope I'm not shot, but when I'm at a point in my life when I do things in my house, I'd rather wait and have the money to do it right than to do it cheaply and have to do it again. So when I heard, and I apologize if I'm ignorant in this area, but I just want to ask the questions and I'm sure you can set me straight and then we'll be and then I will be fine, is the price went down significantly, almost 50%, probably 40%. And the reasons why it went down. Did did we have to change the quality of what was going to be used in order for it to go down? And if so, are we satisfied with the quality now that we're looking at putting up? I heard concrete beams going to prefab. I heard framing going to breakaway walls that may be able to withstand CAT three, which is great. I heard constructed trusses going to prefab and I heard pilings were changed. So my question is, is it good enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Great question.
Anybody else wish to come forward and speak before I get questions answered? No?
I think to answer the question, yes, it's it's structurally sound. It meets the criteria that we're we're wanting to achieve for public health and safety. And again, I think it speaks for itself. The breakaway walls are that. You get into an event like that, they're going to break away and things inside like like houses built on stilts are going to be impacted by the surge. But we didn't cut corners in terms of, you know, structurally, the roof and 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 the the foundation and the beams are there. Again, just just, you know, a prefabricated beam is is as strong as a cast in place. Different different companies, you know, choose to cast in place for different reasons. But this, again, it's a structurally sound, safe.
So.
I have a question.
One, two, three, four, five. All five of you feel very good about this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my obvious question is, why wasn't it laid out like that in the first place then? If it was that much of a savings and it was just as good?
So as I mentioned, the original design was by the Lunds Group. Can't really speak to why they didn't think some of these constructability concerns along the way. When we saw, again, we only had a single bidder, if I recall, the first time that we bid the project, it was almost $900,000. Obviously, that was beyond the budget and we chose to reject those bids and look at value engineering. We went back to another architect, SDG, which we've utilized throughout the city as one of our GECs and asked them to look at at the original design, look at the costs, look at the logistics. You know, to Bruce's point on the type of cast in place beams versus precast, you know, you've got, you've got to get those concrete trucks out to the point. And so there's the logistics of getting out there and some of the liability associated with doing so. So being able to utilize precast beams as opposed to cast in place probably lowered that cost and the contractor's ability to sub that out and try to get the best sub that could provide those precast members as opposed to if it's cast in place, you got to get the labor out there, you got to set the forms and then you got to pour the concrete. So it gave them a little bit more of an ability, I think, to shop the project and get a better cost. What the original architect looked at and versus the redesign, you know, two different approaches. Obviously, the the second architect had the benefit of seeing the costs and the original design and looking at ways to try to value that down and get a project that worked within the budget.
Okay, well, I hope as we do our four big projects, we pick the more creative strategies. So, thank you.
Well, I think the point is, though, if I may, Mayor, is that the the original design and the original architect, when it was submitted, it was, you know, given the the cost, it was rejected by staff because it's find a different way. Find find a different way that we can build structure that's structurally sound and safe, but doesn't cost as much. And and we're very pleased that that SDG found that that constructability and the way to 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 really build the building that was more efficient for us and within our budget. So.
No, I I agree.
And we'd do the same thing.
My concern would be if the budget had been set at 900,000, maybe we just would have accepted it. I don't maybe we wouldn't have. I'm just saying. So it's just like it's kind of dumbfounded me.
I don't think we would have set the budget at 900,000. I mean, originally 300,000.
Yeah, I was going to say it wasn't originally six. It was we upped it in the last budget.
Right.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just it's just interesting to have that difference in the price based on some creativity and how they play it out.
But it's also the world we live in.
Yeah, gotcha.
Construction prices have doubled, tripled and quadrupled, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, no.
Okay, no one else from the public, okay. Come back to the commission, can I have a motion to award this bid?
Some of...
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Walker. Okay, Commissioner Franny, any final comments?
No, I think we've said it all. Sounds like it needs to be done, so let's do it.
Commissioner Walker? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to make a couple of comments. I appreciate many of the points that were made here, and it's just a shame that we, in my personal opinion, that we didn't have the opportunity to do the, do the full review of what might happen out there. This could preclude us from doing things or making changes, and we do know that we have a boat club out there with, and there's different opinions about that boat club. There's, I've heard everything from, well, it needs to be a whole new boat club, to others that, others that will lay down in front of the line and say, don't touch it, you know, but we know we've got some issues about it. So, and I know there's been, and I know once you've, it was approved, or once it's been let, that those qualifications have been taken care of by Bruce, so I'm making sure that the space was available for the boat club and all of that, so I appreciate all of that after-action stuff. But I thought, just that there were some good points made here, and so I'll leave it at that, and I'm supportive of us having a sailing center that's adequate at this point in time then, and this appears to be adequate. Thank you.
Commissioner Gao?
Yes, Mayor. Yeah, it is regrettable that we're in the place that I think we're in. It would be nice if we had had the opportunity to incorporate this into a master plan, so we make sure that we aren't selling ourselves short. Also share the concerns with Commissioner Franny on over limited amount of money, and how concerned we are over some of our other projects. But for me, it's the health and safety aspect that's really going to be driving my decision. It's unfortunate, but that is, that is where I am, that health and safety is going to come first, so, thank you.
For me, this is an easy vote. I understand why all the questions are coming up, but the decision to build this thing was, what, seven years ago?
Yes.
To start putting it into the budget.
Even maybe longer.
And so, you know, I've sat here for all of that, and I understand what we've gone through, and what the ask was, and how we needed to get there, and all the delays that we experienced. I mean, it should have been built five years ago, and too many things came across the desk that stopped that from happening. The master plan wasn't even in our scope when we were talking about building the pram. The master plan, the idea of that came, and that got moved out several years, again, because of budget and other things. I get, in hindsight, yeah, would you like to be able to do that? But every master plan we do, there's always things that we're doing today while we're working on the master plan for the future, there's always something. This is no different. And given, you know, what Keith is saying, what all five of you are saying, and the organizations that are using it, I get it, I do get it. I don't, and I would say this as well, I don't think, even if we do a master plan, my guess is anything on that peninsula might be the last thing we touched out of the master plan, given the amount of expense it might be, given all the different things that might come out of that. I mean, I can, I can imagine all different kinds of scenarios that might be on that peninsula, and not saying I agree with any of them, I'm just saying, and they're probably going to be the most expensive thing besides a harbor master building. So I see that as maybe being the last thing, so again, when I say 20 years, yeah, I see it as something we would have to, if everybody agreed to whatever was going to be done out there, we would have to save money for. And it certainly wouldn't be in this penny, it'd be in the next, and maybe even after. So I feel like it's okay. And that's the way I'm looking at it, and, you know, we made a commitment to these groups, and I'm keeping that commitment on my end, anyway. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody from being here. All right, we have the City of Dunedin Wastewater Lift Station Force Main Replacement Project.
Good morning. Good morning again. Jorge Quintero, Deputy City Manager. Before I get started, I wanted to take an opportunity and introduce Nan Bennett, she's our new utilities director.
Hello, Nan.
Is this the start of your second week or third?
Second week.
Second week.
Hello.
So she's...
We know you.
Yes.
Almost everybody.
Want to tell the folks a little bit about yourself?
Well, first of all, I'm a 25-year Dunedin resident. I also have worked here previously, hate to admit it twice, third time's the charm, though. I'm a professional engineer, I'm a civil engineer, I've been doing things in the water in the public works industry in Tampa Bay for more than 30 years, for various different governments here, including Dunedin. I'm a Pinellas County native, I'm not going anywhere, this is what, where I love, this is where everything I care about is, and I just like the opportunity to make things better every day. I tried to retire six months ago, and it did not...
We heard it.
It did not suit me.
We heard.
So here, I'm back to try to do the best I can to keep the community moving forward.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for being a resident and working here.
So, Mayor, if I may, I don't recall if I sent you Nan's resume. Typically, when we hire a director, we'll send you the resume.
I think you did, you sent us somebody's resume, I don't remember now.
I'm going to resend it, so you can have a look at some of Nan's accomplishments and some of her publications, and she brings this wealth of knowledge and experience to us that is second to none, so we're very, very pleased to have her on board on our executive team, and I know that folks at the water plant are overjoyed, and she's known because she's known in the industry, so we have a famous person here, yeah. So we're...
Some of our staff may have actually recruited her to apply. And it's, you know, it's no downside either that she lives in the vice mayor's neighborhood, so that's quite some time.
I think we're all working on recruiting people.
Yes.
Good.
I'm very pleased that Nan decided to be tired of being retired, because she's hit the ground running, and it's been a huge help to me.
What took you so long?
Well, my husband's been retired for four years, and he's convinced that it's the best thing since sliced bread, it just wasn't for me. So I tried, I gave it an honest six-month effort, and then said, I can't take this anymore.
Was he getting on your nerves, was that part of it?
I believe it might have been mutual.
He's a very nice guy, now, come on.
So with that, let me go ahead and introduce the item you have before you. It is an award recommendation utilizing Pinellas County contract.
I am going to take a break after this. I see everybody's getting up, so I'm just trying to let them...
Do you want to take one now?
No, no, we got you up here, we'll finish that one thing, I was already going to do it, I just thought we would get through the agenda items. Tried to, but I, everybody's leaving me, so...
So as I mentioned, this, we're utilizing a Pinellas County contract that was bid back in August of 2021, so it has some very favorable pricing, and this award recommendation is to address six different aging force mains that we have throughout the city. They're existing force mains, there's a map in your packet that shows the locations north, south city, central, and along the coast. These force mains range in age anywhere between 59 and 74 years of age. They're cast iron pipe, which is in need of replacement, they're, it's a brittle material, and so we want to make sure that we address that. I'm just going to run through some brief stats on the six different force mains that are being, locations that are being replaced. The first one is in Lift Station One area, which is down on the south city along the coast, and that will be replacing almost 1,360 lineal feet of six-inch force main at a cost of about $373,000. That force main carries about 73,000 gallons a day, and it was constructed in 1949. Lift Station Force Main Area Two is a combination of both 10-inch and 12-inch piping, and that's about 3,340 lineal feet of pipe, and carries about 108,000 gallons a day, also constructed in 1949. Lift Station, and that one's at a cost of 1.126 million. Lift Station Four Force Main is about 1,860 lineal feet of six-inch pipe, and that carries about almost 101 gallons, 101,000 gallons a day, also from 1949. Lift Station Ten is about 3,080 lineal feet of 12-inch pipe at a cost of 1.26 million, and that was constructed in 1960 and carries about 706,000 gallons a day. Lift Station Twelve A Force Main is a combination of both six and eight-inch force main totaling about 1,400 lineal feet, carries about 89,000 gallons a day, and constructed in the 60s, and the last, at a cost of 361,700. And Lift Station Seventeen Force Main is about 720 lineal feet of six-inch, and that was constructed in the 60s, carries about 40,000 gallons a day at a cost of 232,000, so all that totals just shy of 4 million, 3,987,428, and it's a total of about 11,760 feet of force main ranging in diameter from six to 12 inches, and if you average that out, that's about $339 a foot.
You could have just said that.
Well, just wanted you to notice.
I was really trying to follow all those numbers.
It's a lot of poop.
Well, it's, you know, it's your monochromatic or your monotone tone of voice.
That's my attempt to just bore you and open...
Oh, it's like, I was sitting here like this, it's like, professor, no animation.
The bottom line is, is a lot of force mains that need to be replaced, and we're utilizing a contract with favorable pricing to do so.
All budgeted, right?
Actually, the majority of it's budgeted, but we are moving some dollars from fund balance for projects that we pushed out to '24, because we're trying to get additional SRF funding for those.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody over here?
Can you tell me how, like, the steps you take to put a force main in, like, specifically layout? You know, I think there's like 100 steps, could you go through all those for the mayor?
Stop it.
I'm actually kidding, I have no question.
I was about ready to push your chair, like, what are you...
I have no questions.
I was going to say, at the risk of really pushing the mayor over the edge, I can do that.
Uh-oh, he's going to go.
You know, I was interested for 30 seconds.
I mean, it's all great, interesting information, but it, none of that helps us decide whether to vote on the bid.
Old pipe.
The la, right, old pipes, however many feet... See, I don't even remember now that you said that last sentence, that last sentence, and how much water, I mean, that tells you everything you need to know.
Almost two miles of pumping sewage to where you want it to go and staying off the street.
Okay, do you see how she just did that?
It's all fun and games. It's all fun and games until she plays.
Take notes.
So I have a serious question.
Yes.
And that's about the budget, and I talked a little bit about this with the city manager about this, but just for clarity's sake, this is coming out of the reserve, out of the reserve monies.
Yes, a portion of it.
Well, it, there's some number of 1.8 or whatever that is, but just in generalities, we're really getting the job done of something that needs to be done, and we're not putting ourselves into any awkward position from a reserve standpoint. I know, I don't want to ask you what our, how much money we've borrowed, et cetera, et cetera, because we should ask the finance director that, but if you could just make some comment about that, just to, just for clarity's sake from the financial side.
Very good question, Vice Mayor. So we budget every year for these type of projects. We've also, we're also utilizing Kerry Ford dollars from '22 that were unspent, and then we're budgeting out of fund balance to make up the difference in order to award this piggyback contract, and purposely pushing out a couple other projects. Every agency's going back to the DEP for SRF funding, because all projects coming in higher than had been anticipated, so the DEP will be revisiting that in August to see if they can increase some of the SRF funding. So in an effort to utilize this piggyback contract, which doesn't allow for SRF funding, we pulled this project out and deferred to be able to utilize those funds for other wastewater plant projects that we have lined up, and we're hoping that by a determination in August from DEP for increased SRF funding, that then we can rebudget and do those other projects in '24. So it was a purposeful utilization of this contract, which has pricing from 2021, and allows us to basically bypass the formal bid process, because they already went through it with Pinellas County, and it has all the line items that we need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rom, did you say everything you, I had looked at you, and you started to say something, and...
Oh, just, well, just to comment, I think, I think it is, I just applaud the efforts by the staff to look for contract vehicles that we can piggyback on, that's tremendously efficient.
This one goes until 2024, and we're planning on using it as long, as many times as we can until it expires.
Awesome.
2021 pricing is pretty darn good.
Oh, hell yeah.
No questions, comment, just...
Go right ahead.
Are we, since we're there? No, just, thank you, Jorge, this is just one more example of the efficiency of government when you hear all kinds of wasting government, that we really do look for the best ways to get things done at the cheapest price, and so thank you for the creativity, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
The big thing is, is these pipes are just old, right? And because it's in the south side area, it's one of the oldest developed areas in our city, one, there are others, but this is one of the big ones. Were there any overflows? You know, we had overflows in Fairway, and I think Ridgewood, maybe a couple other places, I think it was Irma, whatever the 2017, was that Irma?
Yes, we have periodic SSOs throughout the city, there may have been in some of these lift station areas, but the primary ones...
The area I described was like the worst.
Yeah, the primary ones that we actually were able to utilize, Department of Environmental Management funding, Hazard Mitigation Grant funding that we got as a result of Irma was for Lift Station 20 and Lift Station 32, recently awarded the Lift Station 20 project, and we're finalizing some responses to inquiries by the DEM on Lift Station 32, which is in the Greenbrier area. So those two, actually, we have reimbursement funding from FDEM for those.
Okay, is there anybody from, thank you, Jorge, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? I don't see anybody, but there could be people behind these little corners that I'm blinded to. Okay, seeing and hearing, Nan, I come back to the commission, can I have a motion to approve this contract?
I'll move second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Tunga and Commissioner Gao. Anything else from anybody?
No.
I would just say that this is the epitome of why we're here. Infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. It's not glamorous, but you don't get your quality of life if you can't flush your toilet. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Jorge and Nan, welcome back. We'll take a five-minute break before we start the next items.
I'd love her to, but she's not presented the item.
Welcome back to our, uh, City Commission meeting of April eighteenth. Okay, all right, so our next, uh, item is the commission, uh, travel policy. Um, we're required to discuss our travel plans each year, our major travel plans, one of which is Scotland. And, uh, you know, you've got our resolution, um, and the correspondence, and so, uh, let's see, how do I want to start this? So, one of the things we've been discussing the last couple of years, and while I'm not the liaison anymore, it was during my liaison period that we were discussing, um, with the, uh, pipe band director and the drumming director, um, who are our contract employees, um, the idea of, at some point, one of our Sterling trips that does normal, tries to happen every four years is, um, to be able to go see them perform at Worlds. As you know, they are, um, they won Worlds in their grade. I think it was in two thousand and fourteen, I could be wrong, in one of those years around that time, and they were pr, elevated to a grade one. And they've had enough time now to kind of practice, if you will, and, and compete at that level. Um, it's still extremely difficult, uh, but no one from the city, per se, officially has ever gone to see them perform. It is also our sixty-year anniversary for our sister city with Sterling, Scotland, next year. This is not for this year, this is for next year. And that's a big deal. There was money.
I'm not sure I understand.
That was good.
I guess you'll have to explain it again.
Say something else and see what happens.
So, there was money in this year's budget to, um, we budget, I think, around ten point five on a travel year where, where people from Dunedin are traveling over. And there was money in this year's budget, um, that was approved, but it just was not feasible, and, you know, in talking with the powers, the, with talking with the city manager and the pipe band and everybody else, it was, just seemed better for next year. In addition, the new provost wants to come over and visit with us, again, sixty-year anniversary. So, in our trip in two thousand and eighteen, I think is when we went, um, we did a number of things. Jennifer, you want to go over some of the things that we did while we were there?
Sure, absolutely, and, and before I start that, the, uh, the description, Mayor, I think that has germane to this conversation that, uh, I convey to all you, and Nicole just told me that the, uh, that the provost has confirmed.
Okay, good.
That, that he will be coming, uh, in April.
And traditionally, he is, traditionally, he is, um, he or she, whoever comes, is, is the chieftain of the day. So if you now have that confirmation, you'll want to talk with Jennifer, get that confirmation, and talk with, uh, Highland Games, Eric.
Well, it was Douglas Dodds.
Yes.
What's your name?
Douglas Dodds.
Gotcha, well, that's very exciting to hear.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be in April.
Right.
This, uh, this event, tra, this trip would be in August.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Go ahead.
And so, um, during our agenda briefing yesterday, Mayor asked me to put together a list of some of the activities that, that, uh, we undertook when we went to Sterling, uh, in two thousand and eighteen. And so there was really a large delegation that went, I think, eighteen, and it was, uh, Chamber of Commerce and city staff.
Number of businesses.
The mayor, myself, and a number of businesses. Um, so it was important that we reached out to some of the businesses in Sterling and in around that area to, um, to meet and greet. And so the provost was very kind and hosted, uh, a meet and greet with our delegation, uh, and, and the Sterling delegation. And keep in mind, you know, a lot of people don't understand, Sterling is actually the entire county, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's big.
Yeah, it's not just the city.
Not just the little city.
It's kind of like, um, you know, Miami-Dade County is, is a city and, and the county. It's kind of a, a, a bifold government, if you will, and so it's really quite large. Um, and we met, uh, with their delegation, exchanged gifts, um, we, uh, they gifted the mayor with, I forget what it was.
Oh.
A vase or some, it was, it was beautiful, and it's actually in our display case. Um, and also, we, we, we gifted the provost.
It's not at my house.
Good girl.
The mayor and I spent the day then, uh, with the provost as well, and she took us around to some of the, uh, um, uh, facilities and, and buildings within Sterling that, that she wanted us to see. Um, she, uh, some of their museums, kind of a cultural exchange, if you will, with the provost herself. Um, the, uh, we also, during, uh, that, that visit, uh, well, when delegations met.
Well, we saw their stadium.
Their stadium, right, their soccer stadium.
Which at that time was pretty important to us.
Right, ours was under construction.
Right.
Right, yeah, and, and, um, they're very proud of their stadium as well, yeah.
And you should see their rec facility is beautiful.
Yeah, um, during the course of, of our meet and greet with their delegation, the mayor met with some of their elected officials, and I actually met with some of their staff, some of their directors. Uh, no, most notably, their, their minister in charge of sustainability and recycling, which is very interesting. They have a very robust recycling program in Sterling, Scotland. Um, and so we also, uh, met with the, uh, Fourth Valley, I forget, it's Valley Fourth, the Fourth Valley Chamber of Commerce, and their, the, the arm of their Chamber of Commerce has their entrepreneurial arm, which was entrepreneurial arm, which was really very interesting, and, uh, they, they, they sent us home with some products, um, uh, nothing that, you know, that we couldn't get through customs, mind you, but, huh, sent us home with some products. And then we invited them to Dunedin, and that actually, that visit resulted in a virtual mission, uh, trade mission.
With our chamber.
Yes, with our Chamber of Commerce, which is really very interesting, um, the entire trade mission, uh, virtual trade mission. Uh, we met with the history director, Colin O'Brien, the former provost, and also, uh, part-time resident of Dunedin had, had kind of brokered a meeting so we could look at their museum and talk a little bit about their arts and culture, uh, within Sterling, and that resulted in a visit here, uh, from, yeah, Caroline, Caroline Mathers.
Yeah.
Joined us, and made good friends with Nicole Delfino, apparently they're still corresponding. Um, and so, um, we also, uh, it was, we had an interesting luncheon also with the provost and her husband, who is the Surgeon General of Scotland, or the equivalent of Scotland, and the former, and, uh, really interesting talking.
Actually invited us to her home, their home.
Right, yeah.
It's nice.
Yeah, discussing, you know, the, the state of, uh, health and mental health, uh, worldwide, it was, it was a very interesting meeting. Uh, and so, um, we continued to correspond with Sterling, and I had to compliment Nicole Delfino on the job that she's done with our Sister City program. Uh, she did a meet with a newcomers group, uh, last month, I think it was, and they were very pleased with the, with the Sister City program. We have lots of residents who go there, actually, they sign in at the visitors book, uh, for our Dunedin residents who are visiting Sterling, and we do get some, some visitors here as well. So it was, it was a good mission trip, um, the, um, you know, I think that, that the Sister City program, prior to that trip, my impression was that it was more one-sided, honestly, us, you know, uh, kind of catering and, and this, this, uh, relationship. Now, they're, they're, you know, very active in the Sister City relationship as well. So I was very pleased then that, that the provost will be, has confirmed that he is going to be coming to visit us. So we're looking at taking it, uh, one notch up as well, so I don't think I forgot anything, did I?
Well, we went to one of their Highland Games.
Yes, there's that.
That was in the Sterling region.
I did forget that.
Um, longtime Highland Games, and we reported back to the, um, Scottish Arts Foundation about, um, you know, how, what they did, how they ran it, how it was different, how it was the same, just as ideas for them to consider. We went and to the sheep and cattle auction. We went into the sheep and cattle auction.
We did, I forgot that too.
Oh yeah, I'll never forget that. But that, it's a huge, huge industry for them. You met with the school minister or whatever. We couldn't get anything out of him, Jeff, so maybe you can. Anyway, it was very city-specific. And so in our discussions this year, we were talking about, I've already spoken with Pam from the Chamber, who is extremely interested in partnering and going and getting businesses, other businesses to go. So I think that's good, which would obviously then have another, whatever you want to call it, between their chamber there, I think maybe visiting with their visitor bureau, given the fact I'm on the TDC. One of the things that Sterling has been going back and forth in their legislative agenda is, do they want a bed tax? And I have sent them information on the benefits of it. I think visiting with our band, the band is a two-day thing, and watching them. There is a Highland Games going on, as well as a military tattoo going on at the same time that we can also go visit. And any number of other things that anybody has to suggest, we can do. I mean, nothing has been really, we've got to get through this conversation first. But I do think, given the 60-year anniversary, this promise to the band that we would try to come and see them at some point, we've tried to coordinate that with the Toronto trip, but it just never works out because they do do Highland Games up there. It's just never close enough, it's like an hour away and getting a bus, and the whole thing is just, hasn't been able to happen. So, you know, I feel like it's a warranted trip, what we normally budget, and we're not asking for any more. But I certainly feel like, you know, I would like to go, I would like to see our liaison to all Scottish things attend, if possible, I think the city manager is, again, when we talk to staff people, is a great support. Plus she gives, you know, Nicole kind of what's what. The normal amount of money that we budget for a trip like that is 10.5. You're not paying for the whole thing, it's only the days we're doing actual city business. There would obviously be maybe a few extra days that we would go sightsee or do things on our own.
So that's what we budgeted, 10,500?
10 and a half is what's in there right now. Plus, each one of us has our own travel money, so if you know far in advance, right, you can save your money if you want to go on that trip. I personally don't want to tell people that they can or can't go. If they want to use their travel money towards airfare and a couple of nights at a hotel, you know, I don't, that's, that's the choice of the individual. But I think it's a worthwhile trip, I think it's a big year to celebrate. You know, I think we'll get to know the provost when he comes over. I think we can pick new things and we can talk to the different business groups and just other groups as to what we want to try to get out of this trip. I didn't want to try to map that all out yet, because I wanted to hear what you all have to say. So, anything else, am I missing anything, Jennifer?
I don't think so. I think the only thing is, one of the reasons why we do have to have the conversation this early is because, because of the military tattoo, which is huge.
The band, the band time, the Worlds, and we have to make reservations extremely early. We won't even know the dates until August, but we have to start sort of mapping out what we want the itinerary to look at, look like, so that those reservations can then be made immediately as the dates go out. Because it's the busiest time in that region all year. It's like, it's like going to Fort Lauderdale on spring break, or Miami Beach or something, I mean, it's crazy time.
What time of year usually?
August, mid-August. It would probably be a nine to 10-day trip, not all of that a total, but that's not all city-related. I would say four to five days would be city-related.
Right.
But, you know, we can determine that. And again, Pam's ready to partner, kind of like what she does with the Toronto trip. I mean, she wouldn't do the planning of it, we would, but she's ready to get people on board, you know. Again, people would be paying their own way, and they did in our last trip. We had, I don't know, five different businesses in the city go, I think, something to that effect, plus some city, official city people, and they were extremely impressed by that. So it's not just a, you know, a political junket kind of thing, it's, hey, we're showing you how committed we are to this. So, I'll just open it up to what everybody else has to say. Anything on your end?
So, I just want to clarify, so you're, so we have 10,500 this year budgeted, but that would roll over to next year?
Something to that effect, yeah. I just wouldn't get it spent this year.
Okay, and so, yeah, so you're saying we'd live within that, on top of what everybody has in their own-
Plus your travel budgets.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I think it's an extremely important relationship. I mean, sometimes, I mean, I think Sister City relationships are important anyway, especially when you consider all the world issues we have. But in particular, ours is so, you know, so part of the fabric of our community, right? I mean, it's just so entwined, and the fact that they are kind of actively coming here and we're going there and it's 60-year anniversary, I think, I mean, I'm very supportive of trying to, you know, make all this work. And the fact that the Chamber may have Chamber members come, and it really would be a kind of a, I mean, it'd be awesome, right? It'd be an awesome way to kind of solidify and enhance the relationship, which again, is such a part of our fabric. So I'm extremely supportive of it, you know. Obviously, you know, I think we all, as we lay this thing out, we need to be mindful, you know, to just be responsible with the fiscal side of it, and what, you know, the city pays, what we pay ourselves, that kind of thing. But I'm extremely supportive.
Yeah, I'm very, very supportive of this. I think that the alignment between Dunedin and Sterling is a very, very important relationship. And to echo Commissioner Franny, I will say that having the Chamber of Commerce involved with this is absolutely very important, because not only are we showing a leadership connection with Sister City, we're also showing economic connection, and I think, I think those are aspects that, you know, have to perpetuate. And so, yeah, I support this 100%.
Great, thank you. I support this from the standpoint, most certainly, of the band. And I think we're all very proud of their attainment and their successes. And I think it's a good, great time, a great opportunity for us to do that. And I also know that our, the Chamber has always been very supportive of all of these kinds of things. And the last time when you did the trip, when they went, I thought that was a touch of class for us. So, I'm supportive of certainly someone going there and end of the project.
Commissioner?
Always been a fan of this. The cultural aspect of it alone, I truly do talk about our pipe band being an ambassador to our city every time they go. And so the fact that we have an opportunity to go with them as well thrilled the Chamber. I wasn't sure that the Chamber had been involved in the past, which I thought was an incredibly important element. And so the fact that they are getting involved, I think there really is economic value in addition to the cultural aspect. So the fact that we can start to build that business bridge is wonderful. But we sent out, so the provost is going to be coming in the spring of '24, and we're talking about turning around and going in the summer of '24. And I know that certainly the last four or five years, we've really tried to kickstart our relationship from a Sister City standpoint with them, and I thought the idea was to kind of alternate years.
It was.
And so I, and so I-
It was supposed to be like every two, like they come, but they didn't because of COVID. COVID screwed the whole thing up.
And so, and I understand that, but, and I understand that the 60 years is important for next year, but I'm wondering what happens after that? If we're not, because we're focused on the 60 years, whether now we're locking ourselves into this, to where now we're going to have to change it, and when we're changing it, still seems to be a continuing sputter of, where's the continuity, where, you know, it should be every two years, let's get it every two years, but it seems to me there's always a reason why we're not doing it every two years, and it's-
Well, and we only started that, that was-
Right, I know.
And COVID hit, or it would have, because we would have traveled this year, we would have tried to plan it. We didn't even know what their protocols were post-COVID. I mean, you saw how long Toronto went with their COVID protocols, even the Canadian business that we have here. So I think, I mean, what I would suggest, and we can certainly discuss it with them, is that, you know, the provost comes back here two years from now, or two years after our trip, two years after next year, and then we go back there two years after that, that's what I would suggest, given the fact that we're spending more money than they are.
Right, and so, just for date purposes, we're talking about '24, and then we would not go back until '28?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, that would be the theory.
Right.
And I'd like to substantiate what's something you're saying, I mean, they were shut down, completely shut down for years.
Yeah, yeah, Europe was just so much tighter, yeah. So they just, you know, there just wasn't that, and then they had an election, so then we have the new guy that took over for the provost that we met with, so it was like starting all over.
And she, if I may, Mayor, she did not want to travel even, but she, actually, after COVID, she did not want to travel because she is elderly and was, she was invited but really didn't want to travel.
And COVID did kind of put a wrench into everything, and I get it, but I like the idea of alternating.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that.
It seems to me there's all kinds of reasons why you never really get to that point.
And I think when they come in April, we can say that, this is what we want to do for the future, hope you're okay with that, you know, now that COVID's hopefully over forever, you know, we'll get back to it, but-
And when, and I know we just got the invitation, but if we could encourage the provost, because typically, the ones that have come previously, it's just the provost. And so I'm wondering if they can't have a Chamber contingent as well, anybody from their aspect, just to look around and see our city, if that's viable, we can encourage that.
Never know.
I like the idea that we're going to support the band.
Yeah, so it's a little different, the whole five days, or four to five days that we would have normally spent. Everything Sterling won't be that.
But I know that the band this year had originally intended to go, and then they backed out. So I want to make sure that we aren't hitching our wagon to that. You know, that we're there to support the band, and that's great, but the Sister City relation, that's just in addition to the relationship that we have with Sterling, would be my thought. And, you know, because if them are always going through this, are you going, are you not going, I don't know, and they're going on their own dime, and that's very expensive for all those band members that have to take vacations, and it's personal time for them, and it's a big family thing.
But they go every year, almost every year.
Yes, maybe.
I hear what you're saying, but I, you know, when I talked to Eric last year about this year, about the possibility, I mean, he was very excited about it. I mean, I can see, I can see like our whole, because what we do and we travel is, we're all traveling together in a bus. You know, we're not Ubering it, you know, we have a bus that takes us everywhere we're supposed to go. I can see all of us having City of Dunedin Pipe Band t-shirts on for two days, you know, and-
I love all that.
Just showing a whole, you know, and being there.
Right, no, I buy the City Pipe Band shirt, whether the band is there or not.
Right.
Yeah, so that's fine, I guess the only other comment that I would make is that there were plans for this fiscal year for us to go, and so plans were kind of being made, I heard, and then all of a sudden, no, we can't afford it, and none of that was really ever discussed upon the dais.
Because it just wasn't going to even work out, even looking into it, wasn't going to work out.
Well, but I would have appreciated at least having that conversation on the dais at some point earlier, so that is, are we going, are we not going, I don't know, I've heard things, but I don't know anything because it hasn't been talked about, you know, so just a little more upfront, I don't know whether that, not even such, but just a little more so that we're all on the same page, we all know what's going on. But in short, I'm thrilled about connecting with Scotland and what I think that can do for our culture, our heritage, and business economic opportunities. I think it should be at the same level as Toronto.
Right, I think you've got your consensus, the other thing, you know, we'll say to you, I guess, is, when you got to put together the budget, you have to figure that out, and figure out the provost's visit, because there is a policy of what, the support of him while he's here, there is a policy that when there's an exchange, we pay a certain number of nights at his hotel room, not his whole trip or anything.
And then they pay yours.
Yeah, I don't know that we were going to try to do that this coming trip, because we weren't going to spend as many days there. We were, part of our trip was going to be spent with the band. So, I think we were going to try to look at it a little differently in the future, in your future trips. I'm not sure it's going to be even possible to always plan it with the pipe band going. And I say this not because they may not be going, it is just the most expensive time and the hardest time to get reservations. And so, we thought that, given it, we have our 60 years, given it's a big, you know, thing, this would be, you know, a great time to go, because then, yeah, you might, you know, in Scotland, as you can only imagine, not in Sterling-Glasgow area, but in the Highlands, there is the oldest Highland Games in the world going on at the same time we'll be there, along with the military tattoo, that we could, that we could bring back so much information from that in itself. You know, so there are things we're doing towards our heritage that might not be directly connected to Sterling proper, so as it was in our last trip. But again, given whoever decides they want to go, and what you want to see out of it, we can try to accommodate, and what the Chamber wants to see, you know, we're going to try to accommodate a lot of people all at the same time, which will be hard, so we'll try to do what's best for the overall trip and group, but your feedback is certainly. Okay, you got what you need?
Yep.
Okay. All right, proposed agenda for May's second work session. I don't think there's any changes, but you might be adding a historical something, proclamation?
Resolution.
Resolution? No.
No, proclamation.
Proclamation.
Oh, plus a resolution regarding the executive director of the museum.
Both.
Both.
Oh, well, I didn't think that that was going to be on the same agenda.
Oh, okay.
I, I mean, I didn't expect that you'd get that done in two weeks.
Yeah, we can, we can do, let's take a month, because we've got to figure out that-
Yeah, I just assumed, I, yeah, I wasn't-
Proclamation, okay.
Yeah, you put on, you put that resolution or whatever, whenever you figure it all out.
Historical one.
Yeah, this is just the proclamation itself, so, okay, adding proclamation. Okay, is there a motion to approve of that change?
Some of it.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Walker?
I have a question or comment. This is a kind of a small, small agenda, but included in this agenda is a rate, is a rate study again. Can you just give some ideas of what that's about, since we don't have a plan, we don't have a plan yet? What are we going to, what are we anticipating seeing with this at this point?
Right, so there were a number of questions that the city commission had, when you saw the rate study at your last workshop, as well as some of the questions and kind of overview of some of the community meetings and some of the questions that were asked during the course- and some of the questions that were asked during the course of the community meetings. So we're, we're returning with the answers to the questions, specifically from the city commission, that overview, because you had directed us to go out to the community.
Thank you.
And then we'll be giving you consensus direction to bring it back to a Thursday night for a final vote?
Correct.
Okay. Okey-dokey. All right, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we have less than an hour and a half to go, or two business things. So first thing is the survey. All right, let's see.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome.
Hi. Um, I can, we can be very, uh, brief and brilliant here, um, with the survey. Uh, can, can we have the presentation on the screen, please? Thank you. Um, just a brief presentation here to kind of take a look back at, um, the first business survey that we did in twenty-twenty-two, um, and then moving forward with, uh, this year's business survey. Um, here with me.
Actually, our first one in twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, all the twos. Um, with me here is Anne, if you want to introduce yourself.
Welcome back.
Thank you, I'm Anne Mateen with Research Data Services.
Okay, um, so again, we're gonna take a look back, the data is correct on the presentation, twenty-twenty, um, the survey timeline, and then take a look at the, the body of the survey itself. Um, so as far as the survey, the business survey in twenty-twenty, um, as you all recall, it was, um, began before COVID, and then COVID hit, and the survey continued on, so Anne will talk a little bit as far as that goes. Um, we had a hundred and fifty-six respondents. Um, we utilized direct emailing, um, social media and, um, website to get the survey out. Um, there's a few kind of facts as far as satisfaction goes that I included here. Um, ninety-four point nine percent responded that Dunedin is a good or excellent place to operate a business. Um, and then ninety-seven point four, um, is a good or excellent place to work. Um, and again, the satisf, overall satisfaction, um, with the level of services was ninety-one point four. Uh, the top issues that we saw in the business survey were parking, I know that's shocking, um, signage, zoning, permitting, and affordable housing. And Anne, if you want to add anything to that?
Um, certainly, so, um, we have, uh, subsequent to doing the survey, in the process of doing the survey, we, we had some emails that we had in our database. Um, we had some emails that were provided to us from the city and from the Chamber of Commerce, um, that we used to collect this information. Subsequent to that, we have added, so, so the, the email database that we constructed as, as we did the survey, we did a lot of calling to businesses to find out who we needed to be talking to, to, to grow that, that database. So we, we were getting a representative sample. We have, um, subsequent to doing the study in twenty-twenty, we have added another two thousand emails. So we were, we were looking at, um, about seven hundred, just a little under seven hundred emails when we did it the first time in twenty-twenty, and we've added two thousand additional ones. So we should have a very robust sample this time. Um, as Nicole said, we did this over the course of, of the safe-at-home order being put in place. Um, we started before, uh, that all happened during, and we saw significant differences in people who answered before to people who answered after. So it'll be really interesting to see what it looks like now. Um, it'll not just show us, um, what the current state of sentiment is, but how recovery is, is going in the minds of your business community.
Perfect. Um, we'll take a quick look at just the timeline. Um, we're here today, uh, to kind of review the survey with you. Uh, that'll give us a little bit of time if we need to make any tweaks or adjustments to the questions, and then to start promoting kind of the, the start date of the survey through our channels. Um, we anticipate the survey starting May eighth, and then running for about, we've, I've got about four weeks in there. Um, last time it did run a little bit longer, so we may have to be flexible with that end date. Um, and then obviously, you know, if that does end up going a little longer, if we're not getting the responses that we would like, um, and we extend it, then we kind of shift those following dates, um, giving RDS some time to, um, gather and analyze all the data, put together a draft report, and then come back to you in the summer, um, with the findings. Any questions there?
Not on that piece, I don't think.
Keep going. Um, so I have attached, um, to the, um, the agenda, the actual survey body itself. I can pull it up on the screen if you'd like, um, if you have any specific questions, um, or how you prefer to go through it.
And just to say a couple of things about what we've done, very similar to the resident survey. We have kept the core of this, the, the, the strata, the same as the survey we did in twenty-twenty. And that's critical, so that you can compare those results to these results and see changes. But we took the findings from the twenty-twenty survey, we took the things that were surprising, and that where we saw that there was a need to drill down. Um, and we, we have made some changes, we've closed some open ends, um, based on, on the results that we had in that survey then. That doesn't mean that, that respondents still can't give us their open-ended specific responses, we're providing those spaces. We've broken some things out where we wanted to, 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 to be able to understand who was saying what. Um, and then the biggest section, the biggest change, is that when we're talking about events, we've drilled down into, into that topic in a lot more detail. So that's a really brief overview of kind of how we changed those. We also did a little bit of reordering to improve flow.
I don't think we want to go question by question. Every time we do that, we're here for an hour and a half, and we have another subject that we have to cover. I think people probably have come, come here with their questions or whatever, so, uh.
I have just one, I think I just have one question. I discussed it with the city manager, I don't remember if, where we, where we left this, but there's this other part that says go to, go to Q thirty-nine or something like that, but what?
The respondents don't see any of the question numbers, the survey is programmed. So, so when you, this is a review copy for you to see. What the respondent is seeing does not look like this, they see one question at a time. It's designed to be, um, very visible on whatever device they happen to be using, whether that's a, a mobile phone, or a computer screen, or anything in between. Um, so they never see the question numbers, so if there are skips, those are all programmed in, and it happens automatically for them. So if there's something based on their response that flows them to a different point in the survey, they'll never.
I apologize, everybody, I was just asking a question, and in the survey at the end, there's a part that.
Yeah, I saw that.
Says go to.
Question number thirty, right.
Question, go to Q thirty-nine, and I don't know what Q thirty-nine is, I don't see it, so.
Right, so, um, also, we've maintained, I said we reordered some things. We maintained the question numbers from before, um, so, so that, um, because that's, that's not just a question number, it's also the variable name, so it has underlying statistical significance for us. So it's part of that consistency compatibility thing. So sometimes, and, and I think Nicole made the numbers flow in order for you to be less confusing. So, um, that also may be why things say what they say. But the respondents will never even see it, the survey logic will flow, it will be programmed.
What is question thirty-nine?
So, for that particular question, um, it says, over the next twelve months, is your business considering any of the following? And if you select expanding your business in Dunedin, don't know, don't know, or none of the above, um, it just then directs you to basically skip number thirty-eight and go directly to thirty-nine, which is the, the next question that they would see, but do you belong to?
What's thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight is why they say that. So if they're considering moving out of Dunedin, we ask them why they say that. Or if they're considering, um, downsizing, we ask why they say that. But if they're saying, you know, that, um.
But is there, I didn't see a thirty-eight, I'm sorry.
So in an effort to make things not confusing, we renumbered the questions so that they would flow, but obviously that has then made them confusing with.
Oh, I didn't think it was confusing.
With these issues. So for number, for number third, for number thirty, um, if you select relocating to another location outside of Dunedin, in Dunedin, downsizing or closing, then you will get the option to say, to answer in a open-ended, why did you say that? Um, if you answer the other, don't know, not sure, you're not going to have the open-ended as an option in your survey process. So there's rules with the survey, so if you select a certain, uh, response, it directs you to either provide more information or to then skip to the next question.
Okay. Anything, Jeff?
Yeah, the only real question, it kind of follows that same line, but just to make sure. Um, it is, it goes from question six B to four, and then to seven A, and.
Yeah, the numbers.
Just, it's numbers.
I so did not look at those numbers. I'm so glad you picked up on it, because I didn't, I was just reading the content.
Okay.
They'll never see them.
And I, and I think I heard you mention that there were no changes from the previous survey?
No, there is.
There were some, we, we, we wanted to keep a lot of the questions the same, so we have that comparison. So there is, there is that. Um, we reordered some of them, so sometimes, uh, we like, in, in the survey world, like some soft pitches upfront, kind of keep people engaged to continue to finish the survey. So we don't want to ask really, you know, difficult or challenging questions, those we usually save to the end. Um, and then we really drilled down on the events section. So we want to know, you know, we've talked about special events, we want to know how it's impacting our businesses, um, you know, as they're happening and then after they're happening. So there's a, a much broader section on events in this survey than we had asked previously.
This is, if I may, Mayor, this is going to be very useful, because that's a subject that's coming up a lot in the task force, in the Chamber of Commerce, and those types of things, is the number of special events and the impact on the businesses. So it's gonna be useful for us.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Questions?
Well, first, twelve B. During city events, does you levels, I think that's supposed to be, does your, okay, thank you. That was it. My only really question is, Anne, um, and I have a lot of faith in the surveys you've done, you guys have done a great job. Um, is, um, so you've added two thousand emails, and those came from, tell me again where those came from?
We purchased them through a, a list provider, um, to, to make sure that what we were doing was more robust, and.
And then have we added through the year, the years, some of the businesses providing their emails as well, or?
We, so, yeah, there's a few ways we can reach out. We want to give them the opportunity to respond to the survey that's sent from RDS. Um, but then we, you know, as we kind of see who's responding and who's not, then we can follow up with direct emailing, um, to our, the, the business listings that we have, obviously, we'll do the same thing where we're tracking, um, the different usage of surveys, whether it's coming from social media or website. Um, so those will have kind of unique codes, so we'll be able to see, did they, did they answer the survey, you know, from, um, the direct emailing, or did they answer it from the website? And one other thing I did want to point out, as you likely are all aware, you know, this survey was initially, you know, it's, it's an every year, every other year survey, um, that was, um, performed in February. Uh, we very intentionally kind of pushed that back, because we know our businesses are.
Busy.
Inundated. So we're hoping that because of the change in the, in the timeline, that we'll get some better responses.
So, so are the emails that we have from like business tax receipts and things, how do those merge in?
Um, I think George is not here, um, oh. So you're right behind me. Um, we do, um, we have inquired as to, um, getting that database out of the system. George can talk a little bit about how that system works. Yeah.
I mean, generally, just issue a mailer, so we, and we're just using our, uh, the county system that we power from Pinellas County, basically.
So you have any email databases, what you're saying?
Do not.
No, not specifically tied to our department. Now hopefully, when we get to EnterGov, then we can somehow link to a database and have that information available.
Because I get that question, or like, I mean, you know, for lack of a better way to put it, they're like, duh. You know, you get, you take our money, but you don't, you can't then get our feedback through our emails, so. And I don't want to hear from the same person I know Sue and I, you know, last time, Sue and I probably heard from the same person. Um, you know, just, oh, I didn't even know there was a survey. So I just want to make sure we're using all our tools to.
So hopefully through EnterGov, you know, we'll be able to streamline that pretty well, you know, we'll be able to, uh, take that information, because you'll be able to make that application for a BTR through EnterGov, through the system itself. And you're gonna get email feedback as to when that comes in.
I just want to live long enough.
When it processes. It'll happen, it'll happen.
Okay, I'm so glad you said it, not me, because I was thinking it, but I didn't say it.
Right, I just, yes, I got you. Anyway, but thank you, thank you, George.
Oh, yeah, he is, he's over there.
Sorry, Michael, but I do want to live long enough for it, so, um, okay, anyway, uh, thank you. Well, you know what I'm getting to, so, I'm glad we've added that, I'm glad we've done more work on it, but that's, you know, because again, you know, we hear about it, if they find out about it later, and like, oh, you really didn't want to hear from me. So I just, I just want to make sure we're just really working hard to do that.
Last year, we also, or last time, in twenty-twenty, we also harvested emails from the Division of Corporations. So we went through everything that fell into your zip code, where there was an email, and, and added that to the database to make sure we were getting as broad a reach as possible. So we still have those, and we'll use them.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that's, that's my only real question.
Rob, anything, anything on the questions, or?
Just, this is just a little bit more, so, you know, you get surveys via email, and it's so easy to ignore them. What's the plan to follow up? Because obviously, the most important thing about this is, is a robust sampling, as you've said. And is the statistical significance of this is, is very important, because we're making decisions based on this. So how, what's that follow-up look like?
So, so for the ones that we are emailing, um, our system is set up so that if they respond, uh, you know, they, they won't get a follow-up email. If they don't respond, um, we will send them weekly reminders over the survey period, saying that your response is really important, you know, and asking them, putting it back at the top of their inbox.
Okay.
And we, you know, and a- as you all know, our communications department has, has grown, and we, I think we're reaching more people through, um, the newsletter subscription, so we'll include, um, links in there. We'll put it on our website, we'll put it out through social media. So I think we'll be, we'll be reaching a lot more people.
You'll be working with the chamber and the merchants.
Yep, and, and those folks as well.
Great, thank you.
I'm fine with how you're gonna do all that, I just had a, a couple of, of things I wanted to bring up on the question part. I wanted to say thank you. Question number four, you, you added a number of subjects to it that weren't there before, and that was, um, parking, code enforcement, I think even sustainability wasn't there before. That's why I, I, I was the one that asked for the results of last time, I didn't feel like going searching for it, I wanted to hurry up and look at it and compare. Um, so if we, and that, that particular question was, as a member of Dunedin's business community, how satisfied are you with the city in terms of? And it gives a big, long list, and then at the end it says, you know, if you're dissatisfied or very satisfied, please tell us why. So I think that's good. Um, if we can jump to, I'm gonna call it question ten, because that's what it says, although there's two question tens. Um, there is one that says, please share with us any specific areas of concern with the city's infrastructure and maintenance. And in there, we include streets, public transportation, but we don't include, um, parking. So I would like parking added there as well. Because parking is infrastructure. And it just seems to go, con- conditions of streets near you, appearance of medians, street lights. I mean, it, it's putting everything in there but, so I, I feel like it should be added there too.
As long as we kind of understand philosophically, you know, businesses share some of the responsibility for parking.
Oh, they do.
So I mean, I just want to make sure we're.
Well, if you go back and read what we've got from Nicole yesterday, which I did, like you just said to us, top three concerns, one was parking. I think it can be mentioned more than once, is what I'm trying to say, and I was trying to.
I'm good with it.
I was trying to look.
Understanding philosophically what it means.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, if I may?
Well, hang on, because I want to jump, I already know what you're gonna say.
Yeah.
I'm going in order, but I do get to what you're talking about. Um. Twelve D, I guess, says which event or types of event affect your business most positively. And on there it says parades. I think somewhere along the line, we have to differentiate between parades and golf cart parades because we've added a number of golf cart parades in the last four years. We have a whole bunch of them. They're not that intrusive, and I imagine we're going to get real positive ratings on those. But our golf cart events have increased exponentially since 2020. And I think we have to put it out there in some way or another. It seemed like that might be the most logical. If you want to put it somewhere else, that just seemed, special events, that just seemed to me to be the thing, the place to put it. So however you want to word it, I'm not going to, I'm not going to micromanage that.
That's a very good idea, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and then finally, at the end, twenty-two, where it says, what kind of impact, if any, do the following Dunedin assets have on your business? And it talks about the Jays, the ferry, the trolley and the trail. I don't care where you put this, so it can be back over there on that question you were questioning. I do, I do feel that at least on the ferry and the trolley, we need to understand, is that service enough? Because right now, the trolley isn't every hour. I don't think it's enough. But I'd like to hear what the businesses have to say, because it gives us more ammunition. You know, the ferry is sort of an on-call thing. We're working on that being better. I, I think that has to be, I think we need to understand not only how it impacts them, but, but what they'd like to see. And I think we could maybe do the same thing with public transportation on the other question. Let me go back to find out where that was. Okay, that was question ten, where it says, please share with city specific areas of concern with the city's infrastructure and maintenance. And it has on there, public transportation. So.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't know how you, I'm not going to micromanage how you do all of this. I'm just telling you what I would like to know.
Right, and we can do kind of, I'm just initially.
Y'all can think about it, I don't need to see it again. I'm just saying, that's what I would like to know. And it gives us some ammunition because we are working with PSDA, we're working with the ferry, we're, we're trying to get some of these things done. If we can show them a business survey that says, you know, with a good sampling that says, we need more, it just, it's not just a bunch of elected saying it. You know what I mean? I think just, why not ask them?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Does that cover what you want to?
Yeah, but yeah, just back to number ten, your comment on parking, if we could also include bike racks.
Oh, that's a good one. Yeah, bike racks is a real good one. I think bike racks is a great one because a lot of, even when people are redeveloping, in the redevelopment code, they get to remove a parking spot or two if they have a bike rack. So almost every business has one, not everyone, but, so that would be good. They might say they want more, but. Okay, that's all I had. Sorry, I know that was pretty detailed, but I. There's, there's information I wanted to know, very specific.
That's incredibly helpful.
Okay. All right, you guys, good with, and then you'll just put it out there. We don't need to see it again.
No.
Okay. Very good, thank you. All right, it's eleven thirty. Now we're going on to the business plan initiative. So Jennifer, would, would you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I know you guys work hard on this. Would you tell us what you're expecting out of this? Because this is not where we try to add new projects, right? You're going to give us a, a chance to do that, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah, not today, not necessarily today. So, so you remember during the strategic planning retreat, I had mentioned to all of you that we would bring the business plan to you at, at a workshop.
Right.
And the reason is because I want to give you all a good run at the June first, first budget workshop, which is the business plan.
For the new one?
Right, exactly. So, so to that point though, you recall that typically during that workshop, we go over where we are with our current initiatives, and then we discuss any new initiatives that we have.
Except that. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I am interrupting you. My apologies for being rude. In our strategic planning session is where we used to bring forward our new projects, and we'd hammer it out there. And then you and Les and your department heads would look at the budget and knowing our priorities on a couple of new projects, and you'd fit it in to the best of your ability, and you'd come back in that June thing and tell us where you were able to put it. That's not happening now. So how, how is that going to go?
So, and, and really, the issue was that we had larger scale projects that we needed to look at.
Right.
Right, because of ARPA, because ARPA kind of changed the game for all of us. And so we looked at those for larger capital projects and got your input on, on those particular projects. So the, and, and, you know, and typically, some of those initiatives are, are things that we're analyzing through the budget process through, through the summer. And so.
So you're wanting us to do it then?
Yes, yeah.
June first.
Right. So, so Eddie.
I thought that was when we were going to fight about where you put it.
I, I don't.
I mean, that's typically how we've done it before. I'm not saying we have to do that, that new project thing now, that could be. No, I know, I'm, I'm exaggerating.
I like the concept.
Although I'll, feel free, I'll punch you if you want me to. Just kidding. It just feels like, it just feels like that would be the time to see where you would want to put it.
I think it's relatively easy to place it though, depending on what it is that you want to see, which epic goal we're going to look at and then analyze exactly what it is. I don't know if, if we have any big surprises here, I don't think so.
I don't know. I mean, there was a couple of years, of course, that was before COVID. People were bringing four or five things each, and you got five, five commissioners. That's a lot of projects.
Yes.
We don't even have any direction on that. I mean, the last couple of years, we've said one, one project each, is what we've said. One year, we said zero. So I mean, we haven't even talked about that yet either, so.
And we could talk about that today, I mean.
I mean, we, no, we don't have to do it today, we got to cover this. I'm, but what I'm saying to you is, I, I heard Commissioner Walker say he had something he wanted to, a new project he wanted to bring, so I wanted to make sure, because I didn't think about my new projects, and I want to make sure we either all go down that road or we don't go down that road. And then the question comes is, how do we go down that road?
I'm okay with tabling it till June first. I mean, I don't think that was the part of the plan anyway today.
So, so the plan for today was to, to, to go over the.
Where we are.
Second quarter, right, with, with all of our initiatives, to get that in front of you. And then in June, and, and I, unless, like I said, unless there are surprises, I've been discussing with you individually, some of the new initiatives. So, you know, there's not a lot of wiggle room for any new initiatives in our budget.
Looking for money.
I know.
Yes, right.
Although I know that, that all five of you have projects that you'd like to see accomplished. And, and sometimes those projects are even.
Not even money related, they're time related.
Exactly, exactly. So, but we'll have an opportunity on that June first. I want to get this, kind of the status of where we are now out of the way, and then on June first, talk about any new initiatives that you'd like to see. We can then, at that point, assign it to the epic goal, to the department, to, you know, the, the expenditure and the timeframe as well.
Gotcha. I probably wouldn't have brought it all up, except I heard him say he was going to bring something up, and that's why I brought it up. So it's, right, yeah, it's all your fault, Rob. Hey, at least I listened to what you say.
You sure did, man, you did, Mayor, I thank you for that.
It's really, honestly though, it's not, because Commissioner Walker asked me about his initiative. He has an initiative, and when is the best time? And I did tell him that the best time would be today, but that was before staff met and talked about exactly what we need to do today.
Okay, I got you.
I hear what it is now.
Well, I got, I got a pretty good, I got a pretty good idea. It's all boat club related, at least, I think.
So, anyway.
Okay.
What I'd like to do too, is that we have all of our department directors here today.
Gotcha.
They are prepared to.
Answer questions.
Yeah, and, or they're prepared to go over one or two that we haven't really discussed, or just answer questions as we go through epic goal by epic goal. It's, it's up to you. But the important part about today is that I really wanted to give you the status of exactly where we are. We've made a lot of really great progress on a lot of these initiatives, others we haven't even started. And the reason for that is probably twofold. First of all, expenditures, the supply, demand, labor costs, we, we, you know, are, are having a hard time accomplishing them, and staffing. So, so we are, you know, those that, that we know are more outward facing, if you will, and are more of a priority for the city commission, we're working very hard on others. We haven't been able to, to advance as quickly as, as we want to, but I want you to know the status of the business plan right now.
So if I can just ask my colleagues, I don't know how you guys have prepared for this, but I, I don't think we need to have that whole dog and pony show of every department head getting up and making a presentation.
And I think they're fine with that.
I, I mean, I'm assuming everybody has read this document. I'm assuming everybody's read this document, and maybe we just go through the slides and see if anybody has questions on each slide. Because I think we'll get through it quicker. Are you okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Rob?
I'm good.
John?
The chief has a full presentation back there.
Yeah, you know, yeah, he doesn't even want to be here. Did you see him walk in, like, he just slid in right in the nick of time? I'm, I'm sure Jeff's okay too. I, I just think we'll move through it quicker.
That's fine.
Because sometimes when you go over it, you, you create questions in your mind, just because you're looking at it.
Right.
And I, I highlighted my questions, so I know what I got. All right, so there you go, start.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners Les Todd, or the Finance Director, and I'm here with Ashley Kenton, the Budget Manager. Just going to make a few quick comments, and then we'll start walking through these slides. The twenty-three business plan document was approved by Commission on October sixth, twenty twenty-two, and the operating capital budget was also approved on that same day. The staff in a day is a media update, as the city manager mentioned, for fiscal year twenty-three. And we'll be walking through the epic goals, epic goal order one through six. Want to briefly mention in the PowerPoint and also in the attachment A, how the information's set up. As I mentioned, it's an epic goal order, and then also by department with an epic goal. And from left to right, as far as the columns, we've got the project name, the lead department, the fund, or funds in some cases, the cost, if any, in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, and then a status progress, brief update as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and also an estimated percent completed. And with that, we'll just start going through epic goal one and see if you have any questions.
Okay, are there any questions on the city manager's slide? That anybody had? I don't see Rob, so he must have not had a question, or he wouldn't got up. All right? Next one is community development. Did anybody have questions on any of this? Rob, did you have any questions on the city manager's slide?
Uh, no, did not.
Okay, how about community development? Anybody have a, this is all under epic goal one? I didn't have anything.
Nope.
Okay. If I'm moving too quick, y'all stop me. How about economic development under epic goal? Anybody have questions on that one? Jeff, you might have missed it. I, I just said we don't need a whole dog and pony show of presentation on each page. We probably all know what our questions are. Okay, I don't hear anybody saying anything. Library? Okay. Parks and Rec.
This is going great.
Yeah, it's about, it's about to come to a halt now.
Yeah, right.
Because we're in a big department. I, I know I have a question, a couple of questions here.
Go ahead.
Well, I have really a question, but I think you guys are working on it. You know, the Gladys Douglas Preserve and how much money, you know, we've allotted, what amenities we have to do, if there's any remaining funds after that. I know we've had a donation for a couple of things that may help, help the situation there. You know, again, the goal being to do what we've got to do at Gladys Douglas, already opens beautiful. But, you know, will we be able to kind of pull some money back too from that? So I'm, I'm assuming you're working on that. You may not be ready to answer that question.
And I could answer a few of those questions. So as you know, we did have our grand opening for phase one. Was wonderful on February twenty-fifth. And, and that was our phase one, that was basically the conservation trails. And so what the phase two is going to include, and we're working on this now, is starting to continue to do more debris cleanup, looking at getting some prices to take count, some of the lean-tos on, on the property. There's a lot of pipe, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be removed from, from the site. So we're working on that now. But then the next step architecturally is we, we need to get with, hire an architect, and we'll probably use our shortlist to, to do that, for a fishing pier, kayak canoe launch, pavilions, bathrooms, parking, observation tower, or observation platform. And the county's going to be working on, and Paul Kazi and I, Director of Parks and Rec with the county, talking about and discussing the nature, nature center, which is the county's responsibility.
And then by the grant, when do all those have to be completed?
Three years from the time that we get our, our check, and I can defer to Jennifer Cowan, our city attorney, who's working with us on getting that accomplished. And we're really, really close.
One thing, if I may, Mayor, that I want to do is circle back with the Pinellas Community Foundation, because I know that we collected, they had collected above ten million dollar asking price. And I know that the agreement says that the, that the funding will be expended for open space, you know, a lot of those agreements. Last time we talked to Duggan, we were going to figure out how much in excess to, to apply it to Gladys Douglas. So he had a couple of very large donations that hadn't come in yet. You know, because Pinellas Community Foundation, essentially, they, they backfilled the funding because they had pledge agreements. And he was still pursuing those. So if they came in, I'd like to find out if there's anything, thing that we can allocate to this project.
Yeah, because obviously my goal is if, you know, which I think is shared, you know, we get the grant, but we don't have to pull from some of our own money. If we can find other sources, and that money can then go to our four key projects.
Well, now, I will add to that, if you don't mind. You know how we do the, and I'm going to tell you, this idea is not mine, it's actually one of the family members out there. So I take no credit for it. So if it's bad, don't yell at me, and if it's good, it's not my idea anyway. But, you know, they, you know how we do sell a brick somewhere, you know, or buy a bench, or all those things. If we do any boardwalks, if we do, you know, anything, even plank on the pier. I mean, this person was saying that we should absolutely give the opportunity for people's name to be on it, or be on a plaque next to it, and, you know, could be like a hundred bucks a plank, or, I don't know, something that, that is also a fundraiser, and that could go to the community foundation as a, you know, placeholder. So, I mean, I would think that we would want to work on some of the, you know, get some of those, I thoughts. I don't know what best practice is out there, so I don't even want to, I'm not trying to tell you how it should be done, but that was what one of the family members highly suggested. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I mean, no, I was done. I mean, I just thank you for the update, and, you know, just wanted to.
Anything else on Parks and Rec from anybody? Okay, I've got something. This whole Sindune Rotary Stage thing. Why is it still on here?
Yeah, we need to remove it.
We need to remove that. I mean, there's just no redoing it.
Right.
It's done.
Well.
It's gone. And there's, it's so expensive, Rotary's not going to be able to fund it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's something way out into the long term. My only goal with it was, you know, obviously, the whole point of that was for the stage to face the lawn, the grand lawn, and to be a playable stage. Obviously, that didn't happen, and, and now it's.
Yeah, but that's not what this is. The Rotary Stage is, is the thing that we tore down.
Rotary, Rotary needs to come off the list.
Oh, is that, is that?
That's the one we tore down.
The Sindune Stage is still on the list.
Yeah, not the one behind the community center.
The, the Sindune Stage is behind the community center.
Oh, well, then just take Rotary off.
Rotary needs to come off.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because that's, every time I look at it, I want to question it. Yeah, take the Rotary part off.
It's tied to the Rotary, that pavilion that used to be out there.
Right, yes.
It's gone.
Right. Okay, so then I'm going to look over at Bob. I, I see your downtown landscaping project is on there saying it's going to be May, June. I don't even know what it's going to look like. Can you, you don't have to, you don't have to say anything. Can you just send us the, the picture of it, so, so we see what it looks like? I'd just like to know what it is.
Yeah, certainly, it's a new.
I am sure we saw it, but I, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be fun.
Good, thank you.
Just a picture. Okay, uh, okay, now we're in. Okay, okay, now we're under Epic Goal Two. City Manager, anybody? Okay. What is the, I have a question. Jennifer, the decorative furniture, because this is the thing I added to the list, I don't know, six years ago, five years ago?
A long time ago.
It says, "On hold. Updated furniture being replaced by CRA and parks." I don't know what that means. That's all in the downtown. The decorative furniture I always spoke about was not in the downtown. It was everywhere else, trying to give us the sense of place everywhere else.
Right.
So this, the comment in there is not, it doesn't apply.
Correct. Correct. The downtown, the furniture downtown is uniform and decorative?
Yeah, I don't, and that's not what this is for.
Right. Right. Well, you know.
Is there a new comment to go there?
No, I mean, the initiative was.
It would say unfunded.
Was, well, initiative essentially was citywide. We started in the downtown because that's where we had a funding source. And that effort was, actually predates the comment itself, so we can change the narrative here. We can, you know, unfortunately, it's not funded. We can look to fund it next year in a business plan in, you know, some areas of the city specifically. We can do that.
I think we have to look at our other quarters.
Yes.
I think if we don't, and continues start everything with downtown, we're feeding into that whole byline.
You know what I'd like to do.
This stuff is not that expensive. I'm talking about the black wraps stop signs, and, you know, if there's a bench somewhere, make it nice. Make it a theme. I'm not talking about expensive stuff. This is never meant to be some fifty to a hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff.
Yeah, we did do some artistic benches, just so you know, and Patricia. Those were accomplished.
No, I know, but that was in the art plan. I wasn't talking about that either.
I think it might help this initiative if we were more specific than everywhere, and just say, let's start those decorative.
Well, I've been waiting for somebody to come back and say what they think we should do. But it's always been unfunded. So we can talk about it in June, I guess.
Sure.
And related to that, I think the next slide, though, does get into the five-eighty corridor.
It does.
And I think that's.
This is more than five-eighty.
Oh, yeah. I mean, any, it's just, that's just my thing. When I look at it and said CRA is doing it, I'm like, well, the whole point of this was not to be in CRA. It was to be somewhere else.
Yeah, no, on that line, but I do have some new stuff coming up in the new budget for, like, State Road five-eighty to enhance it. So we are looking at some other corridors.
And I'm not saying where it should be. I'm just saying.
No, you're going to see it. We're going to bring it to you.
You know, something. Okay.
We've been waiting.
Well, I mean, I don't want to sound.
No, we've been waiting.
You know, bitchy, because it was good reason to put it off. Really, we had COVID. I mean, it just was not the priority. It wasn't, so I, you know, I don't mean to sound.
I don't think you're sounding.
Frustrated. I'll use a different word. Sorry. See, it's, the meeting's running, starting.
John's defending you, too.
I know.
Yeah, I don't think you're sounding anything. I'm just worried.
Well, I don't want Jennifer to be mad at me. No, I got the look. I already saw what that look was. Okay. Next one is community development.
I'm smiling.
I have a question.
Oh, on community development? Go right ahead.
On the golf cart. Can you just give, I just sent an update on that right at the top, first, third page.
Yeah, so just as a quick precursor, you know, you guys have been talking a lot about golf carts today, so I just got to tell you this stat, because I mentioned it to Jennifer the other day. This time last year, we did about six-hundred-and-thirty golf cart registrations, six-hundred-and-fifty, somewhere in there. We've issued over thirteen-hundred this year already, so it is definitely exploding. You know, a lot of those are probably people with new carts, but, and those are all Dunedin residents, as you know. So getting to your question, the timing's perfect. As you know, we had this BPI approved last year to bring in a consultant to help us look at our existing program, look at expansion opportunities, look at golf cart parking opportunities, look at other infrastructure opportunities, including charging stations and those types of things. We have selected a consultant. They are on board. We are working closely with the Downtown Task Force on this, along with the Chamber, and we are just about ready to fully roll it out at this point. I mean, I think our consultant's ready to go. They've got some of the background information now, including our registrations. They're kind of doing the data analysis now, and I think we'll be rolling out the kickoff meeting within the next, I would say, within the next month.
Don't forget the Dunedin goes karting.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Dunedin goes karting.
And Eric Peterson.
Yes.
Because he's not always a part of that group. Sometimes he is, sometimes he isn't.
Part of their charge is to make sure they're reaching out to all of those individuals.
The Chamber was really pleased with the scope and the.
Yes. So it's a fun project. It'll be a fun project. I really think it'll be fun.
Her and another gentleman. No? Yeah, I can't remember his name.
I thought at one point it might have been Larry, Vian.
No, that was Durkha. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this page? I have one, and I'm going to look at Jennifer Cowan. The State Road five-eight pole monument sign ordinance. So when Nikki was here, your firm was working on our sign code and updating that, and it was going to include an option for, it says State Road five-eighty, it's anywhere, the pole, the monument adjustment. Where are you with that? Because it says unfunded, but it's really was just a part of your.
So, Mayor, if I might, I mean, I think that's something that could easily be rolled into our land development code update? No?
No, they're already working on it.
Okay, all right.
According to Nikki.
The sign code was completed before Nikki left and was actually provided back to staff, and I don't know where it is beyond.
We haven't voted on it.
No. Not at all.
Because I've been looking for it.
Right.
Okay, so a part of that sign code, and this was the code that what's-his-name, Eschenfelder.
Yes.
Painfully did for us. According to Nikki, they were going to put something in there or give language as an option for this monument, pole monument. If it's not in there, I mean, it's, it would, sign code, that's what it, that's where it should be. So I know you don't know it right now, but all it says is unfunded, and I know it's being worked on. So the update isn't correct, is what I'm saying.
Okay. All right, we'll find out exactly what the status is of the proposed ordinance. And then, you know, as far as it being unfunded, I think that there was some discussion regarding some sort of incentives and that type of thing. So that would be the funding, right.
But we also had talked about, you know, what Clearwater did is they gave you a ten-year window.
Right.
For Gulf to Bay. They did a ten-year window that after ten years, or after the age of your sign, or I don't know what it was, but after ten years, you had to change it out.
Yes.
Anyway, all of that has to be discussed. I'm not saying that's the way it should be. But that was held off because of this sign code update. All right, economic development? Anybody got it? Thank you, George. Yes, ma'am.
So, Bob, on the mese materials, you know, I know we've got, what have we got, three-hundred thousand dollars for the mese materials redo of the parking lot, and where are we at, I guess, with the timing of it and also the cost of it?
Well, Phase One, we're less a cost. We're just going to go ahead and put the asphalt millings, you saw the buildings come down. They're doing all the.
It's going to cost like sixty grand, right?
Initial phase, probably about seventy-five, eighty grand, and then we're looking to go to the next phase, which would be curbing, striping, asphalt, more permanent surface, because this is a fifteen-year deal, so.
And when are you looking at doing that?
We probably look to start that probably, you know, late summer.
What was it? What project?
It's the mese materials.
The mese materials parking lot, yeah.
So I guess my question is, is there a reason we have to do?
Yeah, no, Jorge just wished, we got to design a permit. There's still some work that has to be done relative.
Does it make sense to leave it as just a milled parking lot?
It's no striping. It's going to be a little bit, it won't be user-friendly.
That's our code.
Yeah.
That's why we can't do it.
And landscaping and things of that nature, so.
Our code requires us to have pavement, to have landscaping, to have the bumpers, and we got into it with people back in the day when they were doing like a milling or a dirt lot, that they weren't following our code, and so we've made a point of making sure we follow it.
Yeah, because I'm confused. I mean, we've got other situations where we're not doing that. That's what's confusing me.
We have some dirt situations, like Dunedin State Square to Curly Lane One, that was just as-is. But once we start to put in a little bit more infrastructure, yeah, we tend to get toward more where we need to meet our code. And this is going to be a pretty important lot on the east side, for sure.
And what's the cost of that, getting it done the other way?
You know, we haven't got all the design done, nor gone out to bid, so I'm a little bit cautious with just throwing it out there.
We saw the, we saw the cost difference between the full thing and.
Yeah, it's definitely over three-hundred grand, probably.
That's fine. Okay, no, thanks, Bob. You told me what I needed to know. Thank you.
Anybody else? Bob, the Milwaukee Avenue streetscape and slash parking, what is that? It says delayed, but it carried forward from prior year. What is that?
Oh, that's the project with the gateway, with Joe Kokolakis included.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, I remember. Never mind. Gotcha.
Okay. It was angle parking on Milwaukee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Epic Goal Library, Epic Goal number two, anything? Okay, thank you, Bob. Epic Goal number two, Parks and Recreation. Anything? Okay, Epic Goal number two, Public Works. I don't see anything. Utilities and City Engineer. Nope. Epic Goal number three, Parks and Recreation. I was just going to say the Clearwater Ferry Service for the next budget. I know it's out of the marina, so, yeah, you're not to do anything. That's where I saw you had a meeting, though, Vince. I do think at some point we need to put this with all of our transportation things. Or at least discuss that, how that is laid out. That was the thing I picked up on. I have more information. I'm working on the ferry, but there's nothing to report right now. Okay, Public Works, Epic Goal number three. City Manager, Epic Goal number four. Are we going to remove the Electrical Distribution Power Grade Assessment?
I think it would be appropriate to remove it as soon as we approve the franchise agreement, which is coming.
Will that be before the new budget?
It should be. Don't you think, right?
Yes, good morning. We sent back our comments on the franchise agreement, as well as the memorandum of understanding to Duke.
And the long list of things we want?
And they're reviewing that. They've actually already started some of the work, if you noticed, along St. Christopher. They've done some work at that substation, so we expect to get that back. It's actually already about a year past when the agreement should have been renewed, so they're hoping to try to get that before the Commission by July.
Okay. Oh, good, then that'll be before the next thing. We can remove it, hopefully. Okay.
You know, just to say.
Sure.
One of the key things, and I'm not sure we've gotten it yet, before we bring it to you guys, that has been a huge priority for me and for Jorge, is getting, you know, them to analyze some problems we've had in the past, the key outage areas, and how, you know, storms have affected that, and how those areas are, have impacted now. So again, that trending of outage history, because I think that's the number-one issue, regardless of all the other things we might want from them, it's important because it's to the heart of.
Sure.
Of, you know, effective electric service and, you know, preventing outages in areas.
Absolutely.
And they've been pretty responsive to some of the areas that we've brought up, but we want to see that statistical layout. So that's one of the biggest pieces we're waiting for.
Mo, is there any conversation about hardening of our substations?
About what? A hardening?
Hardening of the.
Yeah.
After Irma.
Commissioner, actually, the St. Chris Substation itself, they don't like to divulge how much money they invest in those substations, but it's in the neighborhood of several million dollars that they've expended on that substation itself.
And I was thinking more about sniper attacks and things of that nature. Is that a concern?
Well, a lot of the upgrades that have actually been done to, mentioning the St. Chris Substation, we're working with Craig Wilson and Duke on some landscaping in front of that, but they've painted that station. They've refenced that station. We had originally requested that there be an opaque fence around the entire perimeter. They came back and agreed to some fencing along St. Chris and a little bit on the two corners, but for security reasons and other incidents that they've had at other substations within their service areas outside of Florida as well, they did not want to have the entire station enclosed because of some security concerns.
I think it's fair to say that's an industry-wide concern.
Right.
And I think that, you know, they're all trying to figure out what's the best strategies on that, and obviously, some of the solutions aren't cheap, so.
They can't put it underground, either, can they?
No.
Not the substation.
And it's really tough.
They can't, I'm saying this, I don't really know the answer, but they can't put it inside of a building, right? Even with an open roof.
Yeah, those things generate a significant amount of heat.
Heat, right?
Oh, it's tough. In a free society, we can't unfortunately protect ourselves.
And it is difficult, right? And I'm not trying to point fingers.
No, no.
At least hopefully, the conversations are being had.
No, no, they definitely are, and we've talked about them in the meetings, but obviously, they're talking within their industry.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jorge. All right, Epic Goal number four, Community Development. We increased that budget this last year, so that's going well, I'm sure. All right, Goal number four, IT Services. Goal number four, Public Works. Goal number four, Utilities and City Engineer.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
You know, Jorge, I guess this is you, the Waybridge Woods.
That's my question.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm so sick of seeing that on there.
Periodically. Well, it's an issue, and it's not.
Well, it's an issue, except I will tell you, kids are using that in school. They're using that as the cut-through on their bikes. I watched it. I watched it happen several times.
I mean, and I know you guys are trying to keep an eye on it. Periodically, it's interesting because it's kind of a push-pull, right? I think the neighborhood wants it, but then the neighborhood worries about its safety, you know, and we know that it's unaffordable to replace it.
And we don't have easements in place, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, and although there's some debate about that, I know that we feel solid on that, but some of the neighbors aren't as clear on that. I guess, so again, my concern is I see it in here, but I just, we're continuing to monitor the safety of it?
Yeah, as you know, Commissioner Keith and his staff, they go out and they do periodic maintenance. Sometimes it's based on neighbors providing input on some vandalism that occurs on it. As you recall, several years ago, we placed some bollards on both ends because we had folks going across it with golf carts, which didn't help the situation any.
Going to an illegal area.
It is a bridge that was installed when the development was first constructed. It's a very odd and unique type structure. It's a laminated bridge, and it's unique to the area, because if you go across that bridge, the creek is pretty far down. It's not that it's, you know, spanning and it's just five foot down. The creek bottom is quite a bit down. So you get some kids that are kind of jumping off, you know, high flow levels, they're jumping off the bridge.
Do you have any kids jumping off that?
So, you know, some of that.
So dangerous.
Okay, if you grew up in this area, everybody went to Eastlake, and you jumped off the pipe. What do we call that? There was a name of it.
The canal.
There was another name for it. We all did it.
You know which one?
And trust me, it wasn't always full. We jumped off that thing all the time.
Yeah.
I was in risk management. We responded to one in Dunedin. I forget the area. It was a stormwater issue, and they skateboarded off one of them, and he was paralyzed. He was a young kid, like ten years old. Tragic. So, you know, I do worry about some of that stuff.
But to your point, Commissioner, we've got some funds in there in future years to do a structural assessment, but there are not existing easements on either end of it, so there's not a legal ability to access either end of it. So we would have to.
So it's their bridge, essentially?
Kind of is.
Then why are we, why aren't they replacing it? Why aren't they, through their homeowners? I didn't realize that was the issue.
I didn't realize that either.
Do they have an HOA?
They do. Well, they did.
They did. I don't know if it's an active one currently. You've got the townhomes on the north side, you know, abutting Curlew. On the south side, you've got Waybridge Woods. You know, it is an amenity that was constructed with a development, but there are not sufficient easements on it. It's going to be extremely expensive to remove it, much less replace it.
What are you looking at to replace it?
The last time we looked, and it was probably six, seven years ago, it was, I want to say, for some reason, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is sticking in my head. And we can't build a cram shed for that, if you recall, so, these days. So I would suspect that it would be in excess of a million dollars easily if we were to attempt to do that. And the demolition alone would probably be two hundred fifty thousand, I would think, just, just demolishing it.
So, it's interesting that you said it's actually theirs. I mean, I mean, how did we end up kind of taking it on, then? Because I think it's, it's been, you know, in my mind, it's always been kind of our, ours, but-
They came to us and complained to us. I don't want to use the word complain. That sounds negative. They expressed their concerns about the bridge, the safety of the bridge, and what they felt were, what, I don't know if it was vandalism, but just a lot of kids hanging out there. And it was annoying the people on that dead end. I mean, there's only three houses on that dead end.
No, no, I'm familiar. I've been out there multiple times.
I mean, it's only three.
Very familiar.
If you recall, I think we actually did an assessment in engineering back when John Rice was here. We looked at the benefiting users, basically, the townhomes to the north and, and those residents within Waybridge. And it kind of became cost prohibitive to try to spread that cost amongst the rest of the city when you only had certain individuals that were benefiting from its use. So, it's a conundrum.
So again, I guess the issue is, is it safe and how long is it going to be safe, and then-
Yeah.
Is there any repair work that can be done?
Yeah, Keith's staff, they periodically-
All right, y'all can give, you don't, we don't have to go into it. You can report back that maybe there's some stuff.
So you want us to report back on Waybridge Woods at some point, on the bridge? Okay.
I mean, there's periodic maintenance that's performed, but that's about it, to be honest.
Well, if you feel like that keeps it up, then-
No, I mean, I just-
Then I think we have to take it off the list.
Well. Yeah, I guess structurally, how long is it going to stay safe? I mean, that's, that's my issue.
That's probably what we need to know.
And you, we just need to never lose sight of that because, you know. Yeah, I mean, we've got ten thousand dollars in one of the later years, but of course-
That's just us.
Yeah, it's kind of nothing compared to the issues.
Okay. All right, epic goal four, that was still city utilities and city engineer continued.
Yeah, Jorge's been pretty busy.
Y'all have any questions on that? I have a couple. Okay, septic tank abatement incentives. Again, you don't have to try to get into answering. And I know where Paul went with this. He was trying to cover the big projects. But the whole point of the abatement program was to get all those little homes. At the time, I think there was twelve hundred of them. I, I know that, that Lofty Pines takes a big chunk.
Yeah.
But those little homes in the area off septic, and I don't think we're doing anything towards that. And I want to make sure that doesn't get, well, I don't want to say anything, but I, I, I need to bring that back because that's what it was for. It wasn't meant to be for Lofty Pines.
You know, part of those, because obviously, the impact fees that we collect associated to that are only, can only be utilized to grow the system. So, for example, Lofty Pines, and then utilizing that to offset some of the connection costs to make that attractive, to build that project. But we have done some other smaller ones throughout the city. And part of what we need to do associated with the Lofty Pines project is to revisit our ordinance and see how we can-
Yeah.
Build it so they will be required to connect.
So, all I'm saying is, y'all talk about it because I want to see a pursuit, which is why this whole thing started, was to get all those little single homes, or two or three, that are in the same area, in our city, and off septic. Because it's an environmental issue for us. We have, trying to think of the right word, I'm getting tired. Impaired body, water bodies, and I say impaired, fecal chloroform and things like that. We, you know, we've had that testing for years. I just want this stuff to go away. And that was the whole point of this program. But we're not really, you know, it's not a program. Nobody knows about it. They don't know what to do with it. They don't know what the benefit is. And so there has to be a program. So, if we can maybe work on that. Okay. Epic goal four, utilities and city engineer contin-, yeah, that, I don't think there's anything there. All right, epic goal five, city manager. I don't see anything. Anybody else?
Yeah, I had a quick question. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in fire.
You're on fire?
Fleet Rescue Sixty.
Okay. Have we covered, gotten to that yet?
That must be way ahead. Is it way ahead?
I haven't seen fire.
I think it's farther ahead.
Okay. Okay, goal five, communications. Anything? Okay. Goal five, community development.
Well, I gotta ask, how's our new program working for vacation rentals?
That was my question.
Oh, sorry.
Well, no, see, like, whatever the last one is.
For the short-term rental vacations.
Yeah.
So the modules are in play. We are still, we're finalizing our training right now.
My God.
But Julie, I will say that Julie has been very active outside of that subscription, and we're making some headway regardless. But that will only help us become more efficient when we're, when we're proficient at using it.
So when do we think we'll be fully activated?
I, I think we're pretty much done. I'm going to say within a month or two, we should, we'll be fully activated.
So maybe like in six months? Could you give us an update?
Sure.
As to how it's going and, you know, what the impact is?
Absolutely.
I mean, I have a couple of people that have been doing vacation, you know, rental, rentals from out of the area. And I'm like, yeah, that's not legal. So, yeah, so.
Can, offline, can I get with you just to understand that program?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I'll, I'll bring Julie in, too.
And let me ask you this. It says, short-term, one of the items on there says, short-term vacation rental program evaluation and support.
So that's a separate item.
Yeah, what is that?
That was, if you'll recall, we put in for some additional outside help with that to, to manage, just generally manage that program while we were in transition between our previous code supervisor and this one. Now that Julie's in, I'm not sure that we need it, but with the, with the fact that we're looking at the, the HR implications with respect to potential, one of the things for our office that's been preliminary mentioned is possibly some new code enforcement help. So we didn't know if there might be some reason to keep that just until we, till we figure out where we're going with that piece of it.
Okay. I, I now remember what that is, that I was looking at it. I was like, is that new?
If, if it goes away, it's not a big deal.
One more question.
Never say that, because she's going to take it from you.
From our person. If it's needed elsewhere, let's put it that way.
She, I say she. My husband would smack me. You never call a woman she. That's what he always says.
Nicole, Jennifer, other Jennifer. So the legislation on vacation rentals that's going on up in Tallahassee, it appears that it doesn't affect our grandfathering whatsoever. Is that accurate?
I don't know, because I haven't reviewed your, your code provisions with regard to short-term rentals and grandfathering. But I can take a look at that.
Nicole knows.
Yeah, we are exempted.
So it's not going to, again, it's not going to impact us, we're still-
I'm looking at your face. Yeah, we're good?
In case you shake your head.
There was a provision on the responsible party. We're not good. I don't think we're good yet, right? They haven't, they haven't, that's not, that's not been voted on.
I mean, I can tell you what the legislation says, which is if you, if you have something in place prior to two thousand and eleven-
I had it at eight thirty this morning, buddy. Well, no, we'll be done in about ten minutes. Process server.
If you have something in place, if your, if your regulations were in place prior to two thousand and eleven, then you aren't preempted. You're fine. If it's post-two thousand and eleven, then you, at the time, as it stands right now, you couldn't put in regulations, but they could not prohibit, they could not limit duration or frequency. Now, some communities, and that's sort of just not sure of, if you have a registration program, or some have limited-
We do.
By occupancy and things like that, this legislation is addressing that.
And what is it addressing about that?
You can't charge more than fifty per unit.
It, it, there's detail.
Yeah, preempting, yeah. It is preempting. They're still fighting.
Yeah, but I had one question about that, because isn't it, wasn't there a cap on, if somebody owned multiple units, a cap on all of the, you know, the multiple units?
Yes, yes.
Does that seem pretty-
Come to the microphone.
Yeah, FLC just kind of put this out, came out yesterday. The amendment removes the ability for cities to impose a fine for failure to register, removes the ability for cities to terminate a short-term rental registration for non-compliance, removes the requirement of payment of all outstanding code liens as a condition of registration, increases the cap on registration fees to seventy-five dollars for an individual and a hundred and fifty for collective registrations for up to seventy-five.
Up to seventy-five units?
Up to seventy-five units, yeah.
So again, a hundred and fifty bucks would be the cap for seventy-five units.
Yes.
I mean.
So none of the, so FLC or Suncoast League, or everybody's against it, so.
Yes, yes. And they've been putting out, I know they've been pumping out whole things.
Yeah, I've seen a couple of them.
And they've tried to have, you know, tried to encourage people to reach out.
Are we sending anything in, or is anybody from here?
I mean, we, yeah, we are opposing this as much as we, as much as we can. It's being heard by, in the Senate. It's DeSigley's bill, actually, today. So, in his committee.
It's already passed the House?
What did they say here? The House Committee, I'm assuming that it's, it passed yesterday. It was-
It's only in committee, though. It hasn't passed on the floor yet.
Yeah, it's in committee.
Committee until next week.
Okay.
Well, I can think we keep fighting it, but it's all to the point. Again, because they're taking every other tool out of our hand. The software program and the enforcement is the key, you know? Otherwise, it's kind of a joke, right?
But our boundary is still in place.
Yeah, you know, and, and actually, that's a little frustrating to me, too. Because I'm not saying I would or wouldn't, but, you know, I get some arguments sometimes where I might, you know, reconfigure or expand a little bit the boundary. But we can't. We move at one house and, and where we lose our grandfather. And, and that's, you know, running our city through Tallahassee, which is extremely frustrating.
In theory, we know there's different legal things.
Well, they're also putting forth in this legislation something that provides that if you want to make it more relaxed, you can do that. But you can't make it more strict.
Then can you take it back after you relax it?
You can't. That's the problem.
Right, so that's the point. If you do it, and it's, and it's a cost of failure, and you got people screaming, you can't go backwards. So they put us in a paralyzed position.
That's correct.
You know, from way up there.
Okay.
When we know what our citizens want. It's very frustrating.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, George. Okay, we'll move on to economic development, goal five. There's a lot of stuff on here about affordable housing and everything. We know why that's delayed. We've been updated on that a hundred times, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, just a one quick thing. Delay, I should have used a different word, ongoing. We continue the work. It's ongoing.
Is a better word.
Ongoing, and I'm talking with Jennifer.
Because you're still working with them.
Very much. So we'll, we'll be bringing some to you.
You're still talking about the union, or you're back on five eighty?
We're talking about a couple of opportunities.
Both. Well, I'm not saying we would do both. I'm just saying you're talking about-
No, no, we're, we're talking about numerous opportunities.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Epic goal five, finance. That's boring. We don't care about that.
They do.
There's epic goal five, fire. Is that it? Fireboat engine repower? Is that what you're looking at?
No, I'm sorry. No, I, I'm on six.
Okay. Okay. Goal five, HR and risk management. I'm looking at you.
No, I don't have anything. It's all good.
We are going to do our customer service program. I see that, Jennifer. But that's going to like dial it up for next year.
Yes. We're going to do the refresher courses for the current employees and, and dial it up from there.
Yeah, but I mean, we were doing, our plan was so much bigger before.
Before, right.
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm so sorry, Mayor. I just, can I go back to the fireboat sixty?
Sure.
Just a question on that. The repower, is there a periodicity on that that we are concerned with?
Is there a what?
Period, a periodicity on the repower requirement, replacement of the engines?
It's just the time. We figured the life of the boat will be about that time, or the motors. So we've already done a lower unit on one of them. We expected the other one to go pretty soon. So we're crossing our fingers we can get to FY twenty-five with it.
Seems like a hope and not a strategy.
Right, okay.
Well, the, the plan is, as the chief indicated, was we've done the, the lower unit on one of the engines. If we need to do so on, on the other one, we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll plan for that and, and budget accordingly. But the hope is to extend the life of the entire engines altogether, because those are very costly to replace.
Twenty-five's long, that's, that's a long time.
It'd actually be October of twenty-four, but who's counting?
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, can I piggyback?
Sure.
And actually, my question is about the, the repower, but it's about just a pump. How is the pump working on the boat?
Well, we actually don't have a pump right now. We have one on order, so we're hoping that comes in. It's, again, it's like everything else. It takes time to get it. So we've had it ordered for a couple of months now.
Do you have an expectation? Is there an ETA?
No, we keep, like everything else, they keep telling us, you know, it's one month, and then that month gets here, and it's the next month. So we're, we're hearing May right now, but I'm not crossing my fingers for that.
And how long will it take to implement, once we get it?
Once we get it, it's a simple installation. It's a portable pump, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to goal five, HR and risk management. Anything from anybody? Okay. Epic goal five, IT services, anybody?
So, you know, my question, I talked to Jennifer a little about it the other day, and I, I don't think you're ready for it. So I, I don't know that you want to go into that much detail, but just the broadbanding and, and how, like, how that can be phased, what's critical, what's not. When would we expect to kind of see that analysis done?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Vice Mayor Commissioners, Michael Nagy, Director of IT Services. So we've broken down in previous meetings the broadband into five phases. First phase being, we have to replace the fiber cable from wastewater to the new city hall for the Skinner Boulevard road construction. That's happening, we have it out for bid right now. Then the other phases-
What's the cost of that?
Uh, we haven't got a-
We don't know, yeah, you don't know. You don't have an estimate.
And I don't think that's going to be very expensive, because that's just basically installing a brand-new fiber cable and putting it underground, including permits and that kind of thing. So there's no real infrastructure that I'm aware of that needs to be put in place. It's going to use existing conduit. The other phases, we, we, some time ago, we brought to the commission. But we'll, when we're ready, we'll bring it back so you could determine what priorities. And briefly, the phases are dedicated fiber from public services to city hall. Putting fiber out to the Marina, Edgewater Park, going past the possible new parking garage on Scotland, taking the fiber cable-
Will it go all the way down Main Street?
It will go-
Downtown Wi-Fi.
That's another phase. So one of the phases is getting down Scotland to Edgewater Park to Marina. Another phase is downtown area to Monroe Street Garage, the Pioneer Park, the downtown corridor there. Another phase is to get it to the Dunedin Golf Club, Cart Barn in Sterling Park. And, am I missing a phase? These are the phases. So we're hopefully getting all that out.
The ECA is in there somewhere, right?
That was taken out of the phase because of the funding.
Gotcha.
We may come, we'll see where we're at after all these phases, if we're able to incorporate that later on. But the goal is to have it out for bid this year and start the work and have it, determine what phases you want to implement first.
So, and Michael and I had a discussion after I spoke to Commissioner Franny. We think that those, that prioritization and the phases need to be approved by the city commission before we move forward. So we'll bring that back at some point during the budget cycle, because I think it's going to be a long conversation.
Sure. Well, it's a big chunk of money. And, you know, obviously, I'm very supportive of the project overall, but my goal is to, you know, if there's projects that- but my goal is to, you know, if there's projects that can wait till 2028, I want our four projects to be the priority, so I'm just, you know, being transparent, so, but thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Epic Goal Six, Fire. Any questions?
Yes, can you remind, remind us why the 250 is with the Rescue 60? And that's 100%, and it's in place now, and the structure of it, who's paying for what, how, where?
Yeah, this is one I'm happy to talk about.
Yes, yes.
The county paid $250,000, they haven't officially yet, we haven't given them the bill, but $250,000, the only thing we were over was a slight, I think it's $3,000 for some striping that we did because we wrapped the outside of it to match the colors of the station, but the whole $250,000 is funded by the county.
So that's not our money, that's county money?
Yes, that's correct. And that's for the purchase of the vehicle, that's not, including the personnel that they paid for.
Which they're paying for as well, correct?
Yes, we do maintenance as well, it's budgeted on our regular budget.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, I just want to note that, if you can go back just really quickly.
To what?
Fire, the first page of Fire. Yeah, here we are, that the forcible entry door simulator is 100% complete, so we'll roll it off and put it in our complete projects.
Right, just like the Rescue 60.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Epic Goal Six, HR and Risk Management. Anybody? Okay. Epic Goal Six, IT Services. Questions? Everybody good? Okay. We did make it through and.
Yeah, we did good.
Very quickly.
Wow.
I wouldn't say so much. Oh, stop it, I was going to say not so much brief, but maybe brilliant.
Yeah, okay, I'll go.
I was going the other way.
I'll go with that.